The time is now five oh one. Good evening and welcome to the third session of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four proposed budget work session of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Today is February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty three. This session is designated to discuss the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four budget amendments received from members of the board. My name is Judy McInnes Murray, board chair. Tonight, we have Spanish interpretation services available. Ms. Lopez, would you please make an announcement that Spanish interpretation is available to viewers by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen?
La interpretación en español está disponible para los espectadores haciendo clic en el icono del globo en la parte inferior de la pantalla. Haga clic en este globo y seleccione Spanish.
Thank you. This meeting is currently being livestreamed via YouTube. Viewers who are not able to observe at this time, the meeting is also being recorded. This information will be on our board webpage and also available on the Prince George's County YouTube channel for later viewing. The Board of Education has convened convened this evening for the sole purpose of engaging in a question and answer session on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four proposed operating budget, which was presented by our CEO, Dr. Goldson, at the December eighth, two thousand and twenty two. And we will also take action tonight on these amendments. Ms. Lopez, please call the roll.
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Ms. Busser Struther?
Here.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Mr. Seron Ruiz?
Here.
Mr. Fields? Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Jackson? Mrs. LaSalle Frazier?
Present.
Dr. Juanita Miller? Dr. Sipora Miller?
Present.
Mr. David Moore?
Present.
Mr. Valentine? Ms. Walker? Mrs. McInnes Murray?
Present.
We have four on Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will now have adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt agenda, the agenda for the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty third proposed budget work session?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I had my hand up.
Oh, I'm. I'm sorry, that's Adam Stafford, yeah.
Yes, I was wondering if we could possibly move the com- the public comment period to before the discussion on the amendments?
My understanding was that the public comment is only going to be at the public hearing after this meeting.
Oh, maybe if there were speakers signed up for this meeting, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm incorrect here.
Right, I asked earlier and I was told no, staff, you're there. I was told that the speakers will be at the public hearing after this meeting.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Anything else, Miss Board Member Adam Stafford? Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposition? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Board amendments, discussion, and action. Again, this portion of the agenda is designated to discuss the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four budget amendments received from members of the board. We will also vote to approve or not approve those amendments tonight. I will now yield before to Dr. Kenneth F. Harris II, Chair of the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee, OBAFA, to introduce the amendment received by the committee from the board and to facilitate tonight, tonight's discussion. Dr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair McInnes Murray. So, the OBAFA committee met last Wednesday to adopt or to review proposed budget amendments. I'm happy to say that we have nine recommended budget amendments that have come out of the OBAFA committee. We will review them or we'll go through them tonight, sections two point one through two point nine. I'll just read quickly through the amendments. We have vendor managed child care programs at Hollywood Elementary, PGCPs reading clinics, Acceleration Academy and Learning Hub Extension, Contract Translation Services, reinstatement of a director for diversity and recruitment, specifically Latinx outreach focused, equity audit, addressing the teacher shortage, increased student apprenticeship program, and school-based health clinics. So we'll be going through, those are the nine that were recommended from the OBAFA committee and today we'll be reviewing them for potential implementation into our budget. First up for two point one, we ask Mr. Board Member Briggs. So I'll kind of allow you to set the pace here, colleague. You are of the vendor managed childcare program at Hollywood Elementary. Allow you to briefly introduce your amendment and then we will accept a motion to accept the amendment and then if the motion passes, we'll have discussion, in which case, Dr. Goldson, you and your team can respond in that time. So I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Briggs for a very brief introduction of his amendments for two point one. For member Briggs.
Okay. Thanks so much, Board Member Harris, and hello, good evening or good afternoon, evening to everyone. Really quickly, so I received outreach from members of College Park that brought up concerns about issues at Hollywood Elementary. Apparently in the past, there have been before care and after care programs for students at the, the school, but for reasons that are not very clear, there hasn't been a program this year. So I put in a request, this is per feedback from a city council member from the principal at Hollywood and from a few of the PTA members that were interested in having the, the vendor program that already exists in Prince George's County be brought to Hollywood Elementary. So that's the specific request. It looks like based on the feedback, there's additional pieces and I'm happy to answer any specific questions about what I was told, but, but that's essentially it.
All right, colleagues, I now accept a motion to accept item two point one vendor managed childcare, childcare programs at Hollywood Elementary.
Motion to accept.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Very good. The floor is open for discussion. Actually, let me first, Dr. Goldson, we'd like to hear from your team and then we'll open the floor for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So Hollywood Elementary is actually one of the schools that was identified in the vendor managed care RFP. We have on our website all of the schools that are identified under the different vendors and for some of them, we are waiting for many clearances and license. Hollywood just happens to be one of those and while we've been waiting all year, we are still working with them to get it rectified. Hopefully by the beginning of the year, hopefully in the next several weeks, they will be ready so that we can start for next year. But it's just that we're waiting on licenses. Just so you know, we have to go through our own internal, then we go through the county, then we go through the state. And so our, our office has been working with them. The good thing is that they are already a part of the current RFP and they are slated for a vendor managed program. We're just trying to get them through the licensing process.
Questions, colleagues? You, Chair McInnes.
Thank you, because I can't find a hand. My question is, if it's already slated to be that they're already slated to receive this program, do we need an amendment? Because when I read your comments, it says there's no budget implementation. So do we need amendment or is it going to be taken here? That's my question.
So it's already taken care of. There's no budgetary cost. There's no us having to put out a new RFP because they were one of the schools initially impacted that we brought on board. It's just not open because we're waiting. So we need no additional funds. We need no additional anything. They are covered under the current RFP.
Okay, thank you.
So, because I can raise my hand. So if, um, Dr. White, if you said it's already covered, the current RFP and this budget amendment was to pass, what would, what would happen?
We would just continue our current process, trying to work with the school. And we, and we had, just so you know, we have been in communication with the families because we know, you know, everyone is anxious as we hear new things we're following through and we will reach out to Hollywood again, to the community, so that they know where we are in the current process.
Thank you. Doctor Zapor.
Good evening. Thank you. Mine's just also a clarification question because I had the same question as Chair McInnes Murray. And I just want to make sure if we are voting for an amendment that we're not duplicating efforts. I don't know if that makes sense. That, you know, if they're already doing the work, do we need an amendment?
Vendor managed care doesn't, it really is an external entity to PGCPs. You don't need an amendment. It doesn't cost any money. This really could have just been an email clarification to administration and we could have responded where we were in terms of the school being added.
So that concludes your questions, Doctor Zapor.
Yes, thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Yep. All right, colleagues, any last questions? Okay, we can call for the vote. I'm not sure who's taking the vote today. Is it Ms. Lopez or Ms.?
Yeah.
Ms. Lopez.
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Sorry, can you come back to me, please?
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Can you come back to me, please?
Ms. Busser Struther?
No.
Mr. Briggs?
Am I voting on the amendment since I've proposed?
Yes, yeah, you can.
Uh, no.
Mr. Seron Ruiz?
Can't vote on the budget.
Yeah, for clarification, the student member can't vote tonight, Ms. Lopez.
Mr. Fields? Dr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Jackson? Mrs. LaSalle Frazier?
No.
Dr. Juanita, Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, no.
Dr. Juanita Miller?
So is his vote yes or no?
No.
Vote was no.
Okay, and we are voting against that amendment. Am I correct?
We've called for the vote. Yeah, we've, we've called for the vote for two point one.
Correct, and it's, my, my vote is no.
Very good. Thank you.
Dr. Sipora Miller?
No.
Mr. David Moore?
Obstain.
Mr. Valentine? Ms. Walker? Ms. McInnes Murray?
No.
The motion fail.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lopez, and thank you, colleagues. All right, moving right along to two point two, we have the PGCPs reading clinics, clinics. Board Member Murray, same, same rhythm, present briefly for us and then Dr. Goldson, your, your staff is free to reply after motion's been accepted. Tea, over to you, Board Member.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce this amendment to start a PGCPs reading clinic. I've been familiar with a similar model named the DC Reading Clinic in DC Public Schools. They've had it for upwards of probably three, four, or five years now and have really used it to innovate and accelerate on the work that they're doing in the early literacy space. The interesting thing about the clinic is that basically DCPs teachers can apply to be a part of it. If they're accepted, it's kind of like a semester-long practicum college-level course after school. So these teachers get trained in the science of reading and the other really cool aspect of it is that students and families apply to have their scholars participate if they're behind in reading. And then as these teachers are receiving coursework in research-based literacy instruction, they're basically applying it right away into tutoring students in the system. So it really has a twofold kind of synergistic benefit there in which we're improving our professional development and professional capacity for these educators and then we're also serving the needs of these students. You know, part of the difficulty with high-impact tutoring, in-person tutoring is like finding the human capital to do it. And so this program is really one that will bring additional like hands-on deck by providing stipends to these teachers to participate after school. Now that that program has, has been in existence for some years in DC, they're seeing that they have a growing pipeline of really strong teachers in literacy, people that can go on to be reading specialists, people that go into administration and have this background. And so they've really just been able to use it as kind of a standalone entity that's helping their system innovate and get better faster. I've really appreciated my interactions with it and what I've heard and observed from it in DCPs and basically looking to replicate that model here so that we can serve our students who are below grade level in reading and that we can provide the professional development that our teachers need in accordance with the science of reading.
Thank you for that, Board Member Murray. So we, I would consider it somewhat, while it might not be the exact same, a duplication of efforts. Currently, what we do and what we offer is an evidence-based research program, Voyagers. For currently, we have seventy-seven of our elementary schools participating. Those students are met in groups as small as four, between four and six students, three days a week, two hours each time they meet. We also provide stipends for the teachers who teach it. We also provide partnerships with Bowie, Loyola, and University of Maryland for any of our teachers that want to apply to get their reading specialist degree or certification for our school system. And so currently, our students come, we're doing the same thing. We're using our dibbles, we're identifying the students so that we're approaching students who are one to two grades below grade level. And in addition to that, any of those students who are K to three, we make sure that they also have access to Lexia Core Five. So at this point, based on the number of teachers it has taken for us to run that program, it would be a duplication of efforts. Also, while we only have seventy-seven schools who are participating after school, many of our schools do it during the day and it's open to all of our elementary schools to participate. So our goal is to increase the number of schools that are participating. And lastly, for science of reading that you mentioned, we send all of our teachers to a letters training with the state of Maryland for that training. So while it's definitely identified as a good program, it's just a duplication of efforts that we're currently doing.
Thank you, Dr. White. Colleagues, I'll accept a motion to, I'll accept a motion to accept the PGCPs reading clinic before we have discussion.
I make a motion to accept the reading clinic?
Very good. May I have a second? Again, may I have a second to accept the motion for PGCPs reading clinic?
I second.
Thank you. All right, Board Member Adam Stafford.
Um, colleagues, I think that it would be worth us having a bit more discussion on this. I'd like to get some more information and ask some additional questions about our current program. And so I actually wanted to move to table this discussion for a future date so that we can get some more information.
Oh, okay, Board Member Adam Stafford, does that substitute motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second for the substitute motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, colleagues, in the, in the queue for questions, are your questions around tabling the discussion or the original motion?
The original motion.
Okay, if you're, if they're around the original motion, put your hand down for me. Okay, so in terms of parliamentary, parliamentary procedure, we need to vote on the substitute before we have discussion on the original motion. Okay, Ms. Lopez, can you call the roll for me, please? Unless, wait, sorry, colleagues, is there any discussion around the substitute motion to table? Doctor Zapor Miller?
Oh, I can't find my hand. Where's my hand?
Okay, okay, Doctor Zapor Miller and then Dr. Juanita Miller.
Just to clarify, so the, the substitute motion is so that we can learn more about our, the, the program that's already in existence, Voyager, correct?
Board Member Adam Stafford, yes.
Okay.
Doctor Juanita Miller?
I think my question was similar to Dr. Zapor Miller in that Board Member is asking for more information about the proposed program as opposed to that which is already in place with the system that Dr. Judith White just explained to us.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Ms. Lopez, can you call the roll for me?
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Busser Strutter?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mr. Fields? Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. LaSalle Frazier?
Aye.
Dr. Juanita Miller?
Abstain.
Dr. Sipora Miller?
Aye.
Mr. David Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine? Ms. Walker? Ms. McInnes Murray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, and thank you, colleagues. Okay, moving right along to two point three, Acceleration Academy, Learning Hub Extension. Board Member Adam Stafford, the floor is yours to present this amendment.
Mr. Chair, before you go to that one, I just have a question about this last motion that we took. Dr. Goldson, when February twenty-third, is that when we as a board have to vote on these final amendments or the final budget that has to go over to?
Correct.
Okay, so if we're saying that we're tabling an item, when, I guess I'll ask the chair, the board chair, when will we get back to this in a timely manner so that by the twenty-third, we will have something definitive to present or to vote on?
Uh, Dr. Miller sent. Oh, okay.
You mind if I respond?
No, I don't. Thank you.
So my thought would be, and this is, I guess, is up to the boards to decide, but historically, this budget work session was added. But it's an additional work session from last year. Historically, last year, we actually voted on the amendments at that final vote, I believe, unless I'm incorrect on that. So my thought would be, I see Dr. Goldson shaking her head, so my assumption is that we would table it until, I assume that, assume that board members and administration were, were collaboratively to gain this information, come back with some restored amendment if an amendment exists, and then we would discuss it at the twenty-third like we've done in the past as opposed to this actual board meeting, would be my assumption for how it would work. As opposed to another board meeting.
Right, well, that's, that's what I'm thinking of the timeline that we have as a OBAFA committee had established in terms of working through amendments and getting those amendments and everything back to administration in a timely manner to send forward because I think there has to be, go forward in March. Am I correct, Dr. Goldson? So that's why it's, it's in, I don't know what more information is needed, but evidently the board, the majority of the board sees that there's additional information needed. And my concern is that we get, you know, get that information in a timely manner so that we can move forward with it at our twenty-third meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any comments, Chair McInnes Murray, before I move on?
Yes, the only comment is the tabled motion, it would be up to the maker of the motion to bring it back. So the maker of the motion could choose not to bring it back. So I think we'll know that by the twenty-third.
All right. Thank colleagues, again, Board Member Adam Stafford, the floor is yours to introduce item two point three, Acceleration Academy Extension.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so colleagues, I recently presented this at our most recent OBAFA meeting. And really, the impetus behind this is the national charge led by the Secretary of Education who has told all school districts to implement high-dose tutoring, which is one of the most effective ways to stop the COVID slide as it's being termed in terms of students falling several grade levels behind. And high-dose tutoring is a very special and unique type of tutoring in which students receive ninety minutes weekly of support in, ninety minutes weekly of support specifically for struggling students in their core content. And research shows that this type of intense targeted tutoring has been significantly successful in improving student scores. And with us having so many students that are close to being proficient, this is one small adjustment to our budget that can have a very large impact. While we have had other tutoring opportunities available to students, from what I'm understanding and reading in the responses, a good majority of those have been virtual tutors. And the, what this is asking for is for that in-person support and with evidence that that has been successful here in our district. With the learning hubs, the Acceleration Academies, we saw just really exceptional results, you know, over fifty percent of the students saw gains in mathematics with forty percent, forty-two percent of those students having gains of twenty percent or more. And this is in its first year of the program, sixty percent of those students achieved gains in ELA, fifty percent of them increasing their performance by twenty or more percent. And so this is the type of intense academic support that is going to be needed in order for us to really move the needle on student achievement. And so, you know, my amendment is, you know, to really focus our high-dose tutoring on our early learners. And I've given some suggestions and thoughts on how that could be implemented, given, building on the success of what we've already done as a district. And so that's pretty much it. And I'd love to hear more and thank you all for listening.
Uh, Dr. White, you can respond before we take the motion. Been doing it out of order.
Sure. So thank you for bringing this forward. I would, I would reply the same way I did the last time in terms of duplication of efforts. Currently, we're spending over like millions, over twenty million dollars in the amount of different tutoring efforts for students in our district, many of which we have students that attend and many of which we offer and, and we're not getting the student participation even after a lot of push out to our community. One of the reasons that we've done a lot of our tutoring virtual, not because we don't want it in person during the school year, but we have staff Uh, one of the reasons that we've done a lot of our tutoring virtual, not because we don't want it in person during the school year, but we have staff members, um, they don't live local who give expertise, we try to get them home, and transportation, we all know, has also been a concern, so we don't want to have students start somewhere, and then we have buses trying to make additional runs and then still trying to pick students up to get them home. So currently in mathematics and reading, I just talked about Voyager, which is after school in seventy-seven of our schools, uh, we currently also offer Carnegie um, tutoring in mathematics as well as Dreambox opportunities for students who are, um, performing below, so when you all think about the Acceleration Hub in the summer, it is absolutely, you are correct, an amazing program, but it is also like running a whole school year, like what it takes for us to lift up and get that off the ground, it, it takes a lot. And so there are a lot of offices that are involved in that, which is why we're already kind of running that, so to duplicate efforts and then now have to try to find staff, try to find additional teachers, um, try to find transportation, it, it's, it's counterproductive when we're also, the only time that we can, um, have professional development also is after school, so it's all of these competing efforts. Um, and so that's what we wrote back in the amendment, not that it's not a great idea, we agree with you, we know it's a great idea, which is why we're trying to run those programs now, we just think it would be a duplication of effort to what we're currently doing.
Okay, colleagues, I'll accept the motion to accept the budget amendment for Acceleration Academy.
I'm sorry, could I just make one point, um, board member Harris, before we go forward?
Uh.
Is it possible?
With that, I think that will fall in discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, let's, let's accept the motion first and then, and then you can respond.
Motion to accept.
May I have a second?
Second.
Right, thank you, colleagues, board member Adams.
Thank you so much, Doctor White, uh, for that response, and, you know, I, I, uh, do recognize that the district is employing several different types of tutoring supports. And what I will say is that in this budget amendment, there's, you know, I've, I've stated that some of that funding could be used for transportation. Um, and we could, you know, I'm sure the administration could be creative and thinking about other ways to provide transportation. Um, there are also, um, opportunities to possibly outsource maybe some of the tutoring, it, maybe it does not have to be done specifically by PGCPS staff or, um, but I think that there are many different, um, ways that this funding could be used to offer, uh, this program to students or the, this type of support to students. Um, and I, and I would just, you know, think that we could, you know, maybe explore some additional options, but you know, if we have something that is successful and that works, I think one of the key levers that that summer program pulls on is the in-person component. Um, and you know, that small group in-person component with targeted standards, it, it seems to be working, it seems to be really moving students, and so, you know, I think, you know, if we can scale that, um, I think that that is what we're seeing nationally, and I think that that will just only help us to, to further support our struggling students.
Chairman Mckens Murray and Doctor Zapor Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Doctor Harris. Uh, Doctor White, do we target students for the tutoring, and I think that's the missing piece for me? Because I know we have struggling students, I know we have students with learning loss. When I hear you talk, what I hear you say is that not enough students are signing up for it. My interest is, what about the students that truly need it? Are we targeting them and helping them to get the support that they need with the, uh, programs we already have?
Yes, that's the first line of defense, it's the first student core that we go through, even in the summer, is that we start with students based on the data that we have internally, which is one of the ways that it takes, um, a lot of time to identify students, you have to go through data, you have to identify, you have to reach out specifically to those parents, and then you have to kind of see who wants to, then if you identify that you have openings, then we then move on to, how do we help those other students who may not be in this critical need because we now have open seats, so we try to be very, um, deliberate in how we reach out to students so that, you know, we want to make sure that we're being responsible with who we're touching, um. I just think that, you know, all I can do is implore to you that we know the, the status of our schools and where our teachers are, we talk a lot about, um, being wellness and mental health and all of these things, every time we put something else and we pull, we're pulling away from um, the core of what we have to do. So we have to be in a posture to really do something and do it well versus being in a posture, we're going to do a million things to say that we did it. And so all I can do is come forth to say, these are the things we're trying, because we believe in what both, both the amendments of which you're saying, and we believe that we have something in place that is, is working, want to continue to explore that. The moment we have to turn our efforts to try to do something that's going to duplicate the effort is going to take a pull on the current staff that are in our classrooms and the current staff trying to implement.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, board member Boosa Strutters, and then Doctor Zapor.
Yeah, I think my question is a bit of a follow-up for Doctor White about the summer program, it's my memory that the students who were identified for what we renamed Summer School to the Acceleration Hub, that it was maybe it was mandatory or, uh, it, it's my memory that parents were, you know, basically told, we really need your child to participate this summer, is that correct?
We don't make things mandatory, we try to tell our parents, like, at all costs, we would love to have your child because we identify that there is a, a some type of gap, and we want to make sure that they have the very best before they start the new year. We can't make anything mandatory except for our high school students, we can say that if you don't have your graduation credits, you will not graduate, so it's easier to get a parent to say, I can, you know, do credit recovery at a high school than elementary students, but we, we, our schools are amazing, we reach out to our parents, they call all their parents on their list, and then they keep going down the list, but, you know, some parents and families traveling this summer, so it's hard for us to make those things mandatory.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can't go beyond the one hun, we can't make it mandatory behind, beyond the one hundred and eighty days that are required by MSD.
Correct.
Right, but you, you clarified for me the, the combination of your previous response, that, that, that the data is there to know who to invite, because not everyone was invited to access this program, it wasn't, it wasn't a choice, like, a, a family who maybe would have liked this program if their student was ident, wasn't identified, they were, they were not invited, I think that's, I think that's the distinction around, you know, the, the careful thought put into the cohort for the programs, but, you know, I mean, I definitely, um, the high dosage tutoring, I think, you know, we've all read a lot about the value of that and that it is seen as one of the main ways, um, to support our students, but in terms of structurally with this proposal, the, um, I think with it, without the high dosage being right there in the classroom with the identification from the teacher to the student, and then the, the high dosage tutoring being provided right there during the day or right in the building, um, because of the various, um, you know, difficulties around students moving to somewhere after school, some of my concerns, I also, I, I also think that, you know, when we start to talk about contracting for transportation, contracting for teachers, that becomes another conversation as well, um, but I, I'm, I'm definitely concerned about all the infrastructure to make this happen, it's just some of my comments, thank you.
Doctor Zapor.
Thank you, um, so I, I don't know whether mine's a question, so just work with me as I, or, or just a comment, and, um, board member Adam Stafford, you and I talked briefly about the high dosage, um, tutoring, and I went back and did a li, a little more research, and as it turns out, uh, and maybe I, this is a question for, um, Doctor White, um, as I was going for my community visits, I was talking about TutorMe, and so in order for me to ensure that I was well-versed on what we're using, I realized that our students have access to two, up to two hours of intense tutoring, so they can choose to use it in the high dosage manner, or they can use it, you know, if they just ha, need help with one, one, you know, concept here or there. So I, I wanted to just hear more about it, because I was going to propose to, uh, board members, Adam Stafford, if it's the same thing, maybe we can use, leverage this, um, resource to ensure that we're targeting students, um, who are in the bubble.
Well, the other thing we pay additional funds for is TutorMe, that's a twenty-four seven tutor program, students can jump on all day in any language and get assistance with any course in class. Um, and so that's just another, you know, opportunity that we provide to students, as well as in the, during the day, we make sure that our students are, teachers are reviewing their data um, after each administration, and that they have opportunities, that they go back in small groups and really work to differentiate instruction, um. Our summer program, we have about ten students in a class, but we talk about high doses during the school year, the tutoring programs I'm talking about, we have no more between four and six, because by the state policy and the grants provided, we have to, when they say high doses, they really want around four to five students only.
Thanks, so with TutorMe, it's one-on-one for a hundred and twenty minutes?
TutorMe is, is one-on-one, a child can call and stay on, if they have a question today and they need help with a course, they can call then, they can call back tomorrow, they can call back the next day, they can call about any content they have, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, our Voyager is three days a week, two hours each session. For math tutoring, I'm not sure if it's two, two days or three days, but it's up to the ninety minutes, um, because, you know, with most of the platforms that you buy, we know when they're done with Fidelity, they have to be done a certain amount of time. The other thing you all have heard me mention is we capture attendance, because I want to see those students who show up every time, are they growing against those students who are, they may sign up, take a spot, and they come sporadically, which has also been something that we've seen. So we want to be paying attention to those students, we reach out to those families saying, hey, you're in tutoring, you haven't shown up, hey, you're here this week, next week you're not there, we're following up. But those sessions during the school year are smaller sessions than the ones that we offer in the summer.
Thank you.
Board member Melissa Frazier, and then board member Jackson.
Hi, I have questions about, um, utilization, I know that TutorMe is very similar to, uh, what we use in my, um, my county where I work during the day, um, and one of the issues that we have with it is the access, right? A lot of our students are not accessing it, we use paper and it's a great tool, just like TutorMe, but it's not being accessed, I'm wondering what kind of success are we having with it here?
Yeah, we're actually having a lot of success, um, we have, I pull, I have my team pull that data monthly, and they, they probably pull it more frequently, I ask for a monthly. Uh, one of the other benefits, you know, we talk about writing in our district and the amount of students, and the one thing that we love also about TutorMe is that students have an opportunity to upload their writing and they get feedback on how they're writing, how they're progressing, um, letting them work on their dress, we have over eight thousand uploads on students trying to get assistance in writing, but the other core contents, I now have them going back to pull, because I want to know what content are they accessing the most, what grade level is using it the most, because I think those data points are, you know, what moment in time was that happening, what was going on in the curriculum? So it allows us to look at it from different perspectives. When we had our couple of asynchronous days, we sent that out to parents saying, hey, even while your child is at home, this is a great day that they could jump in and go into TutorMe if they have help, so we're trying to find just different avenues for parents to know that they're there, um, but we are following the analytics to see, you know, where are we getting the bang, we are seeing, once we started pushing that out to parents, so at our first asynchronous day, we really started seeing it pick up with parents.
Good, I have two more questions, uh, are we able to get the data, um, by district and by areas of need, of who is accessing the, the services?
So we, if, when we get the data, we are getting it because it's an outsourced company that we use, so they'll tell us by course and by, um, student. They wouldn't have how our clusters are broken down or how our areas are broken down, I'll see if it's by school, because I look at the overarching, like, what course, what grade? I will find out if it's by school, at least if it's by school, you'd be able to identify what your schools are, but I know they wouldn't be able to do clustering areas, so I'll check on that.
Okay, my last question, the hubs, you know, there are many ways of doing it, and, um, I, I do believe that is an effective tool. Um, one way to do it is to outsource it and be community-based, um, in the high needs, um, areas, and, um, I'm an advocate for that, because, um, students will go in their community, specifically, I've seen it done, if there's a high cluster, um, apartment complex or community where students, uh, we are seeing that the data shows that there's a high need and we have a hub there, that's going to be effective, because it creates not only an academic relationship, but a personal relationship with that community. What are your thoughts on that?
So that's how we ran summer, so summer, we, we partnered with our community schools office, and we looked at certain schools, and we identified, uh, want to say it was twenty-two sites across the district, because we wanted to make sure that we were all over the district and that it was a hub of schools, so this set of schools would come to this particular school, this set of schools would come to this particular school. Um, we also have to work with our facilities team to make sure that those sites are available in the summer. This summer hub process is like running school, we have to set up how to eat, we have set up transportation, and so you need a whole team to gather and rally around that, but we do believe in that model, it's the model that we use in the summer. Um, during the school year, we want that intimate touch in a building by a teacher who's engaging with that student every single day, or that's in that student's, um, sphere of influence, right? They, they know what they're doing, they know what they're working on, they can look at their data, they're looking at the platforms we use against the data that they have, and they're making sure that kids grow. So it's a little different, um, to run that kind of model Acceleration Hub during a school year on top of everything else would, would really pose a challenge for us in how we would have to organize staff to go across multiple schools to pull multiple principals in, when they're trying to run all the day-to-day routines that they run naturally, so that's why we want them at school, during the school year.
Thank you.
Board member Jackson, and then board member Adam Stafford.
Thank you, um, so, to be honest, like, I'm, I'm on the fence, just because, um, it sounds like a great opportunity, but then, you know, hearing you talk, um, about the constraints, or I guess, um, that you will be under, uh, just to uh, make it happen from the infrastructure piece, um, so I heard this idea kind of tossed around over the last couple of speakers, um, was about the, the ability to outsource, um, that particular part, like, have, well, I guess my question is, is that have you, um, considered outsourcing, uh, to some like third-party vendor to run, um, the operations for the, um, high-dose tutoring, um, whether they do it during the day or, um, during, during after-school or during the summers or however, um, you know, wherever we put it or fit it at, um, is that a possibility? Have you entertained that thought? And also, um, with the virtual tu, uh, tutoring, as I've been going around to schools and talking to different teachers and principals, um, the virtual component, um, I, they've been telling me that a lot of the virtual components is, is where they lose the student's focus, a lot of um, focus, and I don't have any data, this is all like anecdotal information that I'm just receiving from the principals and teachers, but it's like, um, that the virtual component is what the, the students struggle with the most. Um, so they're just looking for that in-person, um, touch to get caught up to speed, and I think, um, a lot of people, you know, lost a lot during the COVID year, and we're just trying to find an opportunity to catch it up, but simultaneously, I don't want to um, put a strain on the operations that, that already happened, so I think, I mean, my personal opinion, it could be a viable um, thing if, if we can outsource it, so I guess, have you considered outsourcing this, um, portion?
Yeah, we, we talked to many vendors throughout the year, um, many vendors who have a wonderful plan, uh, when you talk to them and they say outsource and they're going to do X, Y, and Z, and you go to meet with them, and we're still responsible for finding all of our teachers, going out recruiting them, bringing them in, getting them, um, if they're not our, our own teachers, we have to make sure that according to our administrative procedures, that they're following certain background checks, because if something happens on their end, we want to make sure that we know on our end, so that we can communicate the legalities around that to our families. Um, you have to make sure, while they say they're owning it, when the parents call because they have concerns, they're not calling them, they're calling us, and then I have to make sure I didn't get involved with them. So it's all of these pieces that people don't understand, when it, it sounds very easy to say outsource, but it's a lot of back and forth that has to happen, the other thing, just so that everyone understands, whenever dollars are given, there's a level of accountability. So by the level by which we're having to give information to the state on all of these dollars that you all know we receive, staff is being pulled from every direction to try to where we should be out supporting schools, we're over here evaluating data so that we can make sure that we're responding accurately to the reports that are given. Again, this would be one more thing on top of that, if we outsource, we potentially would have to do an RFP, because we would then have to find out, you know, who has the best service. And then that is a, you know, that's a three to four-month process, getting that done, and then it's just other pieces, how do you organize? How do you organize across schools? How do you reach out to all your families? So it's a lot of pieces that while in theory it sounds great and probably is great, it will definitely be things behind the scene that no one knows has to happen in order for it to be effective.
Am, am I able to follow? I just wanted to follow, so it sa, it sounds like, um, that it's, it's, the infrastructure piece is the problem, not necessarily like the, the concept, but a theory about high dosage, um, you know, tutoring, so maybe, maybe we should, you know, table, table this, uh, and just think about, you know, how could we support you, uh, from a uh from a staff standpoint in order for, put you in the best position to maybe later on down the line and talk about, you know what I mean? Just find out more information. I, I don't know. Just my thoughts initially.
And then with Voyager, Voyager can be done in person. Um, you know, we always push to that, but we, we do provide depending on what school you're in. If you're in a school where we know um, it, it takes a lot to get kids back and from, or that's a particular area, they may do virtual because we know we don't have transportation. So there are options where going into next school year, we can really evaluate and reevaluate how we're doing it to see if more schools are willing to go in person, you know, versus being virtual. And we wanna try and get more schools in seventy-seven involved.
Thank you. Um, so the board member Adam Stafford, board member Briggs and board member Mickens Murray in that order. And we'll just, just go one after the other colleagues. You don't have to wait for me to call you.
You know, colleagues, I uh am grateful for this discussion and um around this and I you know, just wanted to, to note, you know, this is only point four percent of our budget. You know, this is a very small you know, impact on the budget and it has a, a far-reaching impact on student learning. As we've stated, you know, outsourcing and pulling in vendors and support, I mean, we really need to do whatever we can to help our students uh perform. We are, students are not only suffering academically, but socially, mentally because of the impact of COVID. And we truly cannot afford to um not take advantage of every opportunity to raise the literacy level in our county. So you know, this is our charge, right? Our charge as board members is to find where there are gaps and use the resources that we have um uh to support those students. And so, you know, I, I do understand that there that it would be ch- possibly challenging and it is a lift, but I think that with the funding that we would provide, I think that we could, we could make it happen, you know? And I think that what we're talking about is the identification of students, possibly those bubble students that are so close to passing or possibly the students that, you know, are, are really truly struggling in several grade levels behind. And, and really providing them with that in-person support, like my colleague, Messiah Frazier, um, mentioned, you know, forming that personal relationship really does support students in, in making educational gains. You know, this can be done in a variety of ways during the school day. Um, and so, you know, I just wanted to say and just to really reiterate that, you know, this, this is our charge, this is the time uh where every resource that we possibly can use to lift students um, you know, is, is needed, you know, virtual tutoring and that is optional. I don't know how that stands up to in-person support that we have seen to be successful. And what I will say is this, you know, I'm willing to, you know, hold off on this discussion, um, you know, for a future date so that we can, you know, gather some more information. I just wanna say that I'm amenable to that as well.
Okay, um, I, so first I just wanna say, Dr. White, thank you so much for all of the background and I think the, the, the kind of lived experience of what this looks like day-to-day because it's so easy to make recommendations, but you know, implementation is very different from, I think, the proposals. One thing I, a few things actually that I had questions about were, you know, one, I think the, the notion of high-dosis tutoring is sometimes integrated into the classroom. And so that's an opportunity when we talked about bubble students, you know, the students who might be right on the cusp, right? For those that don't know what bubble students are, right? They're right on the cusp, they could be C and they could be moving towards the B. Um, but then you have the students that are the F and you have the students that are the A. And so teachers have to teach to that entire class. And so I think that, you know, the nice thing about high-dosis tutoring is that you can pull out those students who are close enough and that gives the teacher that more tailored differentiation that she spoke to Dr. Wyatt, where they can go to the A students, give them extra work, they can go to the S students and give them that extra time that they need. And then those bubble students can ask very direct questions about the lesson. And so I really see the value of kind of this integration that I think is tied into what's happening uh throughout, in the day, in the classroom. Um, that I think is maybe uniquely different from what actually happens with, I think, tutoring, because sometimes the standards for tutoring, when you go to those like online sites, it's aligned with the standard, but it's not necessarily what you learn in class. And so students don't always kind of make that connection directly. Um, but I think it's helpful kind of additional work. So the equivalent of giving them, you know, additional math problems or additional literacy questions or whatever it may be. My thing was, I wonder if with all of that in mind and with, I think, the, the challenge of one, the budget, two, it sounds like more the um, the, the, the logistics of it all. If there's a smaller scale approach that we could take, if we were thinking about um, maybe having, you know, one or two schools that could participate and where we could think about what this model could look like if we had, um, you know, something like a, a high-dosis tutoring um opportunity at a school and, and then eventually scaling that model. So like, one, I think really asking some really thoughtful questions about what worked well, what didn't work well, where, where we put money, because I think to the points of the questions that have been asked here, there's a lot of stuff that is unknown right now. The logistics is a huge piece and we already have parents who are telling us that the buses are running late and they're angry about that stuff. So I, I'm sure for board members, the last thing we want is kind of have additional challenges there in the school as well. Um, but I wonder if we can have a smaller-scale approach. And then I also think this integration in the classroom, like, you know, if there's some way that we could actually have it where after the teacher teaches a full lesson, there's someone there, a paraprofessional, or maybe this is a nonprofit that we partner with that can pull those students out and can provide that more tailored, you know, tutoring that we talked about, that's aligned with the um, with the instruction that's happening in the classroom. So Dr. Wyatt, with all that being said, that long-windedness, I was hoping if you could speak to if anything like that is happening right now. Um, that specific model where there's kind of integration with the actual lesson aligned with high-dosis tutoring. And then if you think that there is a need for that, just thinking about the wraparound supports that we do wanna offer students to close the gaps that have been exacerbated by the pandemic.
Sure. So um, you said a lot and I'm trying to process what you said. Um, the first thing, when you talk about a pilot, I would say what I'm doing right now is a pilot. It's not a pilot, but if I need to gather that data, I can use it as such to ask what's going well, what's not, where are we missing the mark? If we had to do this in person, how could it work? I could ask that now of seventy-seven sites. I think that's a very strong pilot. So um, I absolutely one hundred percent can do that. Um, one of the charges I have right now for my team going into next year is this. Um, right now I realize that many of our teachers are behind in the curriculum. We just, we're off-pacing. And so, you know, I, 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 I then have to say, if I turn that mirror back on us, what does that mean? So while I'm building a great curriculum and I know it's, it has all the standards, what's keeping us off? What can we minimize? What can we take away? How can we touch pedagogy in such a way that um, I now make DreamBox an actual rotation in a day so that I can know with fidelity that every child got to it versus saying, some teachers can give it for homework, some teachers can do it for classwork. So how do I now build it as intentional in their day? So now I can check to say every school who's using it, who's not, where are the gaps, what supports do they need? So that's one of the things that right now in February, I am examining to correct going into next school year. Um, because I think our goal and task every, every year is how do we get better? And how do we, how do we turn the mirror on ourselves to say, what can, what can we decrease, increase to get better? Um, based on staffing in schools, I, you know, I, I have to think beyond staffing in schools because I wanna make sure that the very first level of defense is having a teacher in front of every student. So then that means I've gotta work to fix pedagogy. How do I help teachers understand what they're teaching in a way where they're not so consumed and overwhelmed if they have multiple contents or you know, just life that happens. I always say when school happens, right? And that's before they ever get content. How do you help them with that? So that's one of the things we're, we're working on to address what you just said is how do we help that pedagogy? How do we, how do we bring the intervention in the classroom and make it a part of what they get in their day? So that we never touch them after school, they're still getting what they need based on where they are. And that differentiation we know is important. Regardless of whether you're tag, regardless of whether you're ESOL, regardless of whether you need special education services, or regardless if you're my kid who's on point doing the right thing every single day.
Yeah. And then the last just follow-up to that is if you could speak to again, just uh what's already happening in the district around the kind of ninety minutes? Because that specific model of giving them, you know, sorry, uh, giving at least ni- ninety minutes a day of tutoring does have significant impacts on student outcomes. So if it is happening, if you could just speak to like what that program is, I might have missed it. I apologize if I did.
Yeah. So during the school day, it would, it would vary. So some schools use Voyager during the day and some schools use DreamBox for our reading program. Our students are on, we, we provide a universal screen at the beginning of the year for K to three um around dibbles. Those students who we identify that are at, at risk, doesn't mean that they are below, means that they're at risk that if not touched, they could be below over time. Uh, we make sure that those students are in Lexia Core Five and they also are in Achieve Three Thousand. Those things we have built into our elementary reading uh program because we have to make sure that those students get the right amount of minutes. Um, we also take that achieve that um I Ready all the way up through fifth grade and we test those students equally in reading um two to three times a year because we wanna see where they're starting, how they're progressing, and they too have access in um I Ready to make sure that they're getting that additional dose where they are. So it's adaptive, they get on, it identifies where they are and it keeps building them. That's all in addition to the teacher having whole group, pulling small groups. Um, we've reworked science of reading into our curriculum so that it's not this additional thing for a teacher, but it's naturally a part of what they do in their, in their small reading groups, which looks different than how we were doing balanced literacy before. So with all of that, the shifts, the teachers being trained in letters, we have a lot of colliding forces that I believe when done with fidelity and over time of them getting um just even more familiar in the curriculum, we will begin to see the gains that we need to see.
Thank you. For Chad Vickens Murray.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I appreciate all the passion that I hear uh on this Zoom around tutoring children and I understand that, and I know it's my passion. But what I appreciate more is the sensitivity that the board members are showing to the administration, recognizing that there are some logistical challenges to uh putting this program forward at this time. So I would like to make a motion that we table this uh, uh, two point three, two point three.
Two point three.
Thank you. Until we are, we are able to uh assess the programs that you already have in place and the benefits of those and the logistics of putting this program.
A second.
All right, colleagues, as I moved in second to table item two point three, Acceleration Academy uh and bring it up for discussion at a later time. Any discussion around that for colleagues that do have your hand up, I expect it'd be up for the substitute motion and not the primary motion on the floor. Board member Boozer Struthers.
Yeah, thank you so much. I guess my concerns with tabling is that I think the whole plan this year was for us to avoid coming to the night of the budget vote and on the floor having all these amendment discussions and having the time to talk about it now. And I think the entire process was set up that way. And I, I guess I, I'm, I'm against tabling. I think we should make a decision about this tonight. Um and I, after, now that this is the second one, that's what's giving me some concern. So I, I think we should make a decision tonight.
Board member Murray.
I appreciate um that sentiment from Ms. Boozer Struthers. And I think um, for myself, the reason why I would support a table, I, I think this was a really useful forum. I really liked the format of how we did this this year so that we didn't have to do it on the same night ideally. Um, unfortunately, we just don't have as good of attendance um from board members tonight as we might have hoped and on something as important as budget amendments. I'd really like all members who are able to vote, to vote. And so for myself, I think that's one, one more reason to, to kind of table so that we can get full attendance um and full consideration of each of these important amendments.
Board member Briggs and board member, is it for Miller?
I'm gonna keep it quick. I just wanna, I wanna second that. I think it is really important that if we, that we have robust discussions about these things. And I think if there is missing information that we had just at least addressed. So I, I think it sets a precedent for that. And I would love for like future meetings to have that as well where, you know, we can take that into consideration. So that's my only reasoning for seconding that motion.
Doctor's report.
Um, this is for uh Chair Vickens Murray. I, just an understanding on the tabling of the motion, of this actual motion. I thought I understood you to say that we're tabling it so we can look at what is already in place. Um, so that would be this school year and then come back to this at a future time to discuss the learning uh, the um, learning hu- hubs. Because it's, what I'm hearing is we do have similar um resources already in place. And so as to avoid duplication of efforts, my understanding was we're tabling it not for the next meeting, but we're tabling it so that we can at least observe what we have and get the data as Dr. White said on the um Voyager pilot she has in place.
Uh, my intention of tabling it was uh definitely not to come up at the next meeting. My intention of tabling it was to really allow us some time for members to gather some information and to understand what we are already doing that we're doing well and what we, what we need to improve upon. So that's the reason that I made the motion. Um, so, thank you.
Point of information, can you just clarify what you just said? I missed that last part of what you said. You tabled it for the next, for us to discuss at the next meeting?
No, I did not. When, when I table something, it's to really allow real time for us to gather information. I don't know if we have enough time between now and the next meeting to gather that information. So I, I was tabling it to really genuinely uh gather some of that time and get some additional information from the administration. And it sounded to me, based on what uh Dr. White said, is that they are gathering some data. They need some additional time to get that additional data. And then at, at that time, they will present it to us over time. Sometimes I think we make hasty decisions because it it looks good, sounds good, and it's the best, I guess, best program that's popular today. But I think the discussion that we've had tonight, from what I've heard from everybody in this room, everybody's interested in tutoring. But we need to get it right. And it, and if we already have something in place that is getting it right, then we need to accept the benefits of that. So we need, I need more information. I can speak for myself.
Board member Murray and then board member Adam Stafford.
Um, I was just gonna say that, I mean, I think ten days is a pretty decent um amount of time to, to gather more information. And the other thing is that, you know, we, we would love to have more time. It's just that like that is the date that we're voting on the budget. So in order for Ms. Adam Stafford's amendment to be considered in the budget, it ha- it has to be considered on the twenty-third is the way that I'm, I'm looking at it.
Well, maybe I should withdraw my motion unless and when I make the motion because my intent for my motion was to not necessarily uh do anything between now and the twenty-third. So I'll withdraw the motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll, oh, sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
Um, I wanted to make a motion to table this um amendment discussion for until the next meeting on February twenty-third.
Colleagues, a motion on the floor to table item two point three, Acceleration Academy until the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting. Can I have a second or may I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Board member Adam Stafford. Also colleagues moving forward, moving forward colleagues, because we are on item two point three and we have to get through two point nine, we'll now be moving to first round is three minutes, second round is two minutes, moving forward. Board member Adam Stafford.
Yes. So colleagues, I, I don't think our students can wait another year um for this to be implemented with fidelity. I also would like to remind us of the blueprint. So you know, the blueprint is, you know, suggesting that districts implement evidence-based supports and interventions such as after-school tutoring as part of support plans for students that are not meeting great level target. Now, from what I'm gathering from what we've just heard from Dr. White, you know, we do have supports available. Um, however, those supports are optional. In many cases, they are virtual in most cases. Um, and also that does not align necessarily with the national directive that has been given to districts all over to provide in-person support um up to nine, ninety minutes a week, you know, even with the you know, thirty minutes or two sessions weekly, that still gives us sixty minutes. Um you know, we're talking about the logistics, that's not our job to solve, colleagues. We don't, we don't deal with the logistics. That's with Dr. Goldson and Dr. White and their team. They're experts in that and they handle the day-to-day operations of the school system. Our job is to provide the support. So if we have the Voyager program that's happening and it can be done in person and we can ramp it up to be at more schools in person, that's wonderful, right? We already have vendors, it's already working. We're providing more money and more support because at the end of the day, if you look at our task force, we have to do everything that we possibly can to provide students with the most support that they can have um in order to be successful. And so I don't think that we should get bogged down in the logistics of how this will work. It seems like there are many different puzzle pieces that could fit together to make this work really well. We are providing the funding to take something that has been proven to be overwhelmingly successful and scale it up. And so I just want to have everyone keep that in mind um, as we think about what we're doing here. We're not trying to tell them exactly how it will work and who will take buses and who will, that's not what we're doing. Um, so I just want us to keep that in mind. We're trying to scale successful programs to meet more students. And we are going to trust in the administration to pull on the levers that they have um, to, to make that happen. And what we're doing is not uncommon. Like this is, like, I just want to reiterate, like, there's a national directive for school districts to do this. There's also local directives for us to provide this level of support. And it's very small in comparison to our larger budget.
Thank you, board member Adam Stafford. Doc's four Miller.
Thank you. Um, I was, I, I was just going to, um, I don't know when to say propose. But um, board member Adam Stafford, I really believe in the tutoring as well. And I can hear your passion and I'm just as passionate about it. But I'm, I'm wondering whether you would consider going slow to go fast on this. Um, because we already have something in place. And we also know that, you know, research has shown when you try to put multiple initiatives in place in a district, sometimes it, it will cause more harm than good. So since we have something that's already in place, um, let us look at how it's working, collect the data from how it's working. And I think you had mentioned it, and if we need to ramp it up, that's where we'll ramp it up. And at the same time, if we're looking at other options, the administration can start considering it at that time. So, um. Yeah, so that was my comp.
Okay, thank you colleagues. Any further discussion on the amendment to, I'm sorry, the motion to table item two point three until the February twenty third meeting, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, um, I guess I would, I was, um, I guess I may be the, the one who initially brought up table in it. Um, and the reason why is because I think conceptually, we all agree that tutoring is great. But it's the logistics that, you know, pose a challenge to us. Uh, my goal was to see if there's a way to um, find a support um, either contractually or, or however um, to make the tutor and work. And whether we have to, I guess, uh, scale it down or uh, to, to be more, I guess, cost-effective and not burn as many resources. I guess my whole um, intentions is more so just going through the different exploratory. Um, just, just, just thinking about how we can do it to make it work. Because right now, as it stands right now, we wouldn't be able to do it um, enterprise-wide level. But I think if we just focus on how we could make it work, um, and I think that was the reason why I kind of proposed motion, making the motion and table it. So we can just figure out more information, the information, the data they'll give us, and then explore other ways that we can probably make it work.
Okay, thank you colleagues. Is your hand still up? Board member Adam Stafford.
Yes, I just urge colleagues to um, table this until our upcoming meeting. Um, given what I stated about the fact that we, we're not, it's not necessary for us to delve down into logistics. If we need to go into logistics, sure, you know, by then I could present a plan of logistics of how this could be done in this district and how it's done in other districts as well. I mean, if that's what folks need to see to understand why this is urgent. Um, but you know, as someone who sits on the academic achievement committee, and if you have a chance to come to some of our meetings, you will see um, that our students desperately need more. I mean, it's not just about providing the baseline um, or a small subsector. We can provide more. We have the ability to do more. And that's, that's what I'm urging us to have that conversation on the twenty third. Um, so I hope that you will consider tabling it until then so that we can do that.
Thank you colleague. I don't see any other hands. Ms. Lopez, will you please call the roll?
Please have a staffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruce's brother?
No.
Mr. Briggs?
Hi.
Mr. Fields? Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lastel Frazier?
Yes.
Dr. Juanita Miller?
No.
Dr. Zippor Miller?
No.
Mr. David Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine? Ms. Walker? Mrs. Mikkens Murray?
No.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion fail.
All right colleagues, now we will reconsider the original motion to accept the budget amendment, item two point three academic acceleration, I'm sorry, acceleration academy. Um, in the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget. Ms. Lopez, will you call the roll again, please?
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce's brother?
No.
Mr. Briggs?
Sorry, abstain.
Mr. Fields? Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson? Mrs. Lastel Frazier?
Yes.
Dr. Juanita Miller?
No.
Dr. Zippor Miller?
No.
Mr. David Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine? Ms. Walker? Mrs. Mikkens Murray?
No.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Um, motion.
All right colleagues, moving on to item two point.
Did you say the motion carries or fails?
Sorry, I wasn't able to um, to get off mute. Um, my role was yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the motion still fails. Um, item two point four colleagues will be contract translation services. I believe that's board member LaSalle Frazier, yes? No, who? Who sponsored that?
Translation services, I think is Adam Stafford.
With Adam Stafford and Les Alfredo.
Okay, sorry, you're co-sponsor. Okay, board member Adam Stafford for item two point four, please.
Um, I co-chaired that, uh, co-sponsored that with board member Mikkens Murray, Chair Mikkens Murray. Um, if you'd like to describe it more, that would be fine.
Or Chair Mikkens Murray.
Okay, um, this one, this uh, amendment is about translating existing documents into the languages that um, represent the ethnicity of our students. And um, I think that is important. And I believe, and you can correct me, anybody in the administration, but I think we're out of compliance if we don't get this done. Um, so that's why I'm supportive of getting the document translated.
Thank you, board chair, uh, Dr. Golson.
Yep, um, actually Raven Hill, Hill is here to respond. But I do want to note that um, the day after our last budget session, February third, I did send directions um, on how we can convert our current board doc, docs information so that it can be read in Spanish and French. But Raven Hill, let's give this a shit.
Good evening, board members. Um, I did some research on this issue after the last board meeting and discovered, um, and speaking with my web services team and other um, districts, that it's really just a matter of uploading information using the HTML format function versus PDFs.
So, so what I'm hearing is that you already have something in place to do this. And it's just a matter of somebody dedicating some staff to do it.
Us retraining um, the board staff on how to receive documents so that it can be translated. If you want, I can resend those directions to all the board members. I sent it on um, the third, I think it was, or the fourth.
I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Dr. Goes, Golson is Michael Dickerson. Um, and I worked with the staff to start uh, uploading the information. Um, so that it can be seen directly in the page when you open up a P A S as an example. And we'll work with communications to come up potentially with a different template. So it'll make it easier for them to upload it using uh, HTML.
So, uh, to my fellow um, supporters of this amendment, maybe we can withdraw this amendment at this time. And we don't need to have a discussion.
You'd have to, in, in terms of procedure, you have to either make a motion to accept it or reject it and then have a discussion around it accordingly.
Okay, then I, I make a motion to, to reject it.
Yeah, I, I don't agree with that, so.
Okay, so let me see if there's a second for board member Mikkens Murray first. Is there a second colleagues to reject the um, item two point four? Again, colleagues, is there a second to reject item two point four contract translation services?
Second.
Okay, now the floor is open for discussion.
Okay, the reason, if, may I speak to the motion first before you go to the stand?
Yeah.
Okay, the reason that i- if we have a mechanism in place where we can get these documents and, and we're going to start, what I'm understanding from uh, the administration, sort of like immediately, then I don't see incurring the cost of additional contractors to do it. If we can do it, if, if they believe that we have the capacity within the administration to do it. And if I'm misunderstanding that, please uh, help me. Thanks. No, that's what we said, so we preparing and email with the directions in it.
Board member Boozer Strutter?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that this, that this will uh, also the board policies website that the language services work there, because those are all PDFs too. And I do know last year when we talked about this, um, you know, we, it came up around getting all of these in Spanish and French minimally for the law. And I did at times see some that, that were, but now that I'm clicking over there, I'm not seeing all of them. So does that mean the entire board policies uploads will be changed as well? So that we don't have to worry about old vis- you know, versions that we know that it's always the current version.
But what we know is that in order to do the translation process, the document can't be PDF. So Mr. Dickerson is already aware that was part of the direction. He's going to work with the team. Um, so that we can put it in a format. When we, when we get it, normally it's in Word anyway, we convert it to PDF. So it's just when you post it in Board Docs, you don't do it that way. That way it can be translated using Google Translate.
Yeah, and I think I'm talking about two sites. One, the Board Docs news is fantastic, like the fact that that is a feature of Board Docs is way overdue. And I'm really glad we're going to be able to use that because that's the discussion period. Like, that's when you want the version seen by our constituents before public comment. And, and, and of course, we improve public comment with the versions as well. But um, it's this final website where they reside is what I'm referencing as well. That it's both, it's two platforms.
Yeah, I'm aware of the second platform, board member Boozer Strutter. We believe we can do it in-house, but if we needed additional funds, so we could work with you.
All right, I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I also want to point out that even if you were sending the document out to be translated, uh, there were multiple languages that you would be looking at. So for this type of translation need, Google Translate is my understanding is what's commonly used.
Thank you.
All right colleagues, any other discussion around the motion to reject item two point four? Board member LaSalle Frazier and then board member Adam Stafford in that order, please.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. So are we talking about just the policies and documents that are, are um, in the website or are we talking about documents that parents will receive at their schools? That we're trying, we were trying to translate. I say that because as a second language learner, um, Google Translate does not do justice when um, you translate. There's a lot of things that are not understood when you translate it, the, the kind of formal language that is used for Google Translate. A lot of times does not match the way that we speak as a people. Um, and that's a cultural responsive um, intervention that needs to be done. So it needs to be done by experts that know the language, not a machine.
And board member Lacya Frazier, um, we would tend to agree with you. We are not talking about the documents that schools receive. Uh, that information already goes through our office of interpreting and translation. But for an ongoing basis with the way the information on board docs is used, Google Translate is what's used in other districts.
Okay, I say that because I've made a couple of visits to schools and I have not been able to find any um, documentation in Spanish. When I look around and when they're, um, for example, they have fairs or they're doing outreach, everything's in English. I went to a couple of schools where um, Hispanic parents came to me and asked me to translate the documents for them because they were not um, given any um, Spanish language documents. So, and that was just three schools that I visited over the summer that were having fair. So uh, I'm concerned about the level of um, translation that we have in our schools.
I would ask if you could share that information with those locations because we really do try our best to make sure that those documents are translated. So it sounds like to me that we have some gaps at schools that we need to play.
Board member Adam Stafford. Okay, um, no further discussion on this. So motion to reject item two point four contract translation services, uh, Ms. Lopez, please call the roll.
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
No.
Ms. Bruce's brother?
No.
Mr. Briggs?
This is to reject it, um. No.
Mr. Fields? Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mrs. Lastel Frazier?
Just to be clear, this is to reject, right?
This is to reject.
Can, can you please say what it is again? I want to be clear.
Yeah, this, the, the motion on the floor is to reject item two point four contract translation services.
Yeah.
No, the, Dr. Juanita Miller?
No.
Dr. Zippor Miller?
So I'm, I, I just want to be clear. This is a service we already have. So we are saying we already have this service, correct? Can you come back to me?
Yeah, this is, you didn't, that we can provide, yeah. Without the additional call.
Mr. David Moore?
No.
Mr. Valentine? Ms. Walker? Mrs. Mikkens Murray?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
No. Motion fails to reject. All right colleagues, um, by default, do I now have to take a motion to accept it? Okay, so I now take a motion. I will now accept for someone to make a motion to accept item two point four contract translation service.
I make a motion to accept it.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Great. Uh, flow for discussion, Mr. Briggs.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because I, because I know we're like, we're, we're voting.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because I because I know we're like we're we're voting on a motion, but the original motion was. Very sounded specific based on the language of the amendment. But then with the additional information that was shared. About what the what the school district already does, and then also the fact that there are schools that aren't getting the translation services that they need. In an appropriate way, I just feel like that the motion maybe isn't. I guess I would just like to know what we're what we're voting on exactly because there are parts I agree with and parts that I don't agree with. So are we voting on not having the translation services? At all? And that's kind of the end of discussion, or are we making additional changes to the amendment based on the discussion?
This is my understanding and others can correct if I'm wrong. We're voting now item two point four for the amendment that was passed through for contract. Relation, I'm sorry, contract translation services. Which had been identified as a service that. Is able to be provided to us without the additional costs. We are voting now to add it to our budget. In order to get the work done, if that makes sense.
It's it's actually for board documents.
For documents. Board member Boozer Strutter, Chair Mickens Murray, Doc is a poor Miller. Not board member Boozer Strutter anymore. Did you take your hand down?
Sorry, I'm sorry for my coughing. The I guess what I wanted to clarify is that it was my understanding this was. Specifically for within our board budget, and that is where my comfort level is around. That we would have a budget should we need to contract on it for timeliness. So that probably needs to be clarified now. And then the second is I I'm not seeing the. A dollar amount. So can that please be clarified as well? Thank you.
So I'll go to Chair Mickens Murray to clarify the. The board budget aspect. And then I'm not sure who I'll go to for a dollar amount. So I'll just leave it out there.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the what do you want me to clarify, please, repeat?
A board member Boozer Strutter, you're you you said you need clarification over where where this is an item for the board's budget, correct?
That that was my understanding that this is specific to the board's operations and budget. Should we ever find that we do need additional services for timeliness? Was my understanding of this and the other was I'm not seeing a dollar amount.
Okay, my intent was to ensure that we were in compliance with the law. From what I'm hearing from Ms. Raven and from the CEO, the mechanism is in place for that to happen. And we have the in in-house capacity to make it happen. So now I am not seeing a need to incur additional costs. For the board or the administration for this effort. So if I'm misunderstanding this, Dr. Goldson or Ms. Hill, please let me know.
That is correct.
Okay, Dr. Zippor Mille.
Thank you. My question's been answered. I was going to ask the same questions that Chair Mickens Murray was asking just for clarification that. A mechanism is already in place for this. I think at some point. Board member LaSaya Frazier brought up a concern at the school level. And the CEO said there there was a mechanism in place for that and. Board member LaSaya Frazier will get in touch with her with those schools to ensure that that gap is filled, so.
Dr. Goldson.
The actual amendment says in order for Prince George's County Board of Education to be in compliance with state law, it is our request that the board. Provides funding for the contracting of services to translate vital documents. In-person oral language interpretation services for parents and community members. So that's even broader than what was than what our discussion was. And we actually provide that. We have a whole office that does that. Initially, the request came up in a previous budget session because it was around. Board docs, items on board docs being translated, which we did provide an explanation for. And I also just sent it to Alvin.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson. I don't see any other hands up for discussion to accept. Item two point four contract translation services. So I will move to call the vote, Ms. Lopez.
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce's brother?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Mr. Fields? Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. LaSalle Fraser?
Yes.
Dr. Juanita Miller? Dr. Zippor Miller?
No.
Mr. David Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine? Ms. Walker? Mrs. Mickens Murray? Dr. Harris?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to item two point five colleagues, item two point five is. Reinstatement of a director for diversity and recruitment. Latinx outreach focus, board member LaSalle Fraser, the floor is yours to briefly to briefly. Present this budget.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, board, for listening to our response.
Excuse me, Dr. Harris? The the motion failed. We have seven total. Yes.
Say it again.
The motion fail. We only have seven total, yes.
I think we only need seven because.
No, you're fine. You're 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 right on point. We need we need seven because board member Sarone Reeves can't vote.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry, Chair Mickens Murray. Go ahead, board member LaSalle Fraser.
Yes, hello again. So my request is to. Have a director for Latinx hiring, recruitment and retention, a very specific position. That focuses on Latino recruitment, hiring and retention. In the last session, there were questions about the nature of the position. So what I have done and I want to share with you, and if you don't mind, I would like to read to you. The reasons why I think that this position is important. Positions of leadership impact and authority in our school district have to reflect our multicultural demographics in Prince George's County. The number of Hispanic students in the county has been steadily expanding over the past decade for a whopping thirty-six percent and growing. And this is nine percent points higher than the national Latino student representation, which hovers around twenty-seven percent. Of public schools. Studies show that students of color experience academic and social emotional growth. When they're placed in a classroom with a teacher who shares ethnic background, and that's from a study done by Eagle Light twenty fifteen. Despite this percentage, many of our PG CPS students will go through their entire K to twelve career. Without ever encountering a teacher or a school leader who shares their Latino racial and ethnic background. That to me is just unacceptable. Academic literature in this area also shows that students that have. At least one same race teacher during their time in elementary and secondary school experience. They have wide variety of benefits that include higher test scores. Lower rates of chronic absences, fewer suspensions, higher rates of recommendation for gifted and talented programs. Higher rates of enrollment in advanced courses and higher rates of high school graduation and college enrollment. And that's also from Eagle Light in twenty eighteen. Furthermore, in a two thousand and four report by the Wallace Foundation. Title How Leadership Influenced Student Learning, the principals. Are the only second to teachers when it comes to in-school factors that impact student success. In our school district, where we have two hundred and eight schools and centers, we only have two principals who identify as Latino. Recruiting a more diverse teacher workforce can start with hiring a more diverse principal workforce. Because the research shows that heavy Latinx principals is more likely to attract Latinx teachers and then reduce the turnover rate. We need to think outside the box. We need to become the national leaders we say we are by walking the equity walk, not just talking about it. If we're serious about equity, we must show that we're serious. We need to consider the idea of recruiting a Latino director for recruitment, hiring and retention. Who will focus in seeking Latinx talent nationally and internationally. Partnering with Latinx teacher recruitment and support organizations, developing multiple grow your own talents. That's specific to our Latinx groups, like our students, our parents and our par professionals. We need to have intentional mentoring programs and supports for my current talent so that they will not leave the system. And focus on creating a trusting and safe environment where our teachers are willing to move up the ranks. From assistant principals to principals because they feel protected and supported by our leadership. Hiring an executive level Latinx focused director sends a powerful message that adults from all backgrounds. Have important contributions to make in our schools. Better representation is not just beneficial for our Latino students and staff, but it's valuable to all our students. Because if our Latino students succeed, our whole school achievement increases and the whole system benefits. So this is why I'm urging that we provide not. Just a regular position, but a director that focuses specifically on our Latinx hiring, recruitment and retention. Currently, as the school board member, I am the only Latina or Latino. Member at the executive level. Either in the count, in any part of the county, and that's just not acceptable. We need more people that are executive leadership positions. So our students can see themselves and then our community feels respected. Thank you.
Dr. Goldson or Dr. Baldwin?
Good evening. Thank you. The actual original amendment was to reinstate a director for diversity. But there was no such position. The proposal for having an executive level position for diversity. I've actually already put that in the budget, so I'm not really clear on what this new amendment would be for. In addition, we also already have a director who's responsible for those activities as well as a supervisor. So the request for an executive level position that will focus on diversity strategies has already been put into the budget. And in addition, I want us to remind us that we are under federal law and EEO. So we have to provide equal opportunity for everyone. In addition to kind of piggyback on board member Adam Stafford. Thank you for that reminder about that you all don't deal with logistics. But you deal with the funding and we've already put in for that position or a position that will address these. Issues that you have brought up. So I think that we've already met. The need that you've brought to our attention so we can move forward with implementing diversity strategies.
I think that we don't have.
Sorry, one second, board member LaSalle Fraser. I think she's breaking up a little bit, but colleagues, I will now accept action on item two point five before we go into discussion. Item two point. Motion to what? Repeat for me?
Motion to accept to approve the amendment.
All right. All right, the floor is open for discussion.
Yeah, I wanted to add that we don't have a position that specifically focuses on Hispanic recruitment. There's very specific strategies that are done when you are focusing on Hispanic recruitment. Our stats show that we don't have enough staff and that we're not doing a good job right now. Right now, we need somebody that focuses and does culturally responsive practices so that our our. Teachers and our current staff feel like they can move up the ranks and they feel that they have. Specific affinity groups and mentoring programs in place so that we can grow our. We know that there's a shortage in administrators. What better administrators than the ones that come from within? But we don't have any specific Hispanic focused strategies and interventions that are for this group. And while we do have a diversity and equity position, we do not have it that it's focused. Strictly on Latino recruitment. And I actually asked for information to clarify the questions that were provided. But I won't get those answers until February sixteen, which is passed today.
I actually, again, we have put in for the FY twenty-four budget. A coordinator for diversity strategy to focus on the things that you have asked for. In addition to, it will have also a broader impact on not just the recruitment piece. But there are other cultural competency pieces that they can work with and being fair to all of our students. While I do recognize our Hispanic students in the large population, we have an obligation to all of our children who come from a diverse background. And even for if he was here, Mr. Valentine would bring up also creating opportunities for more males. So I think that there is a great opportunity for us to increase our diversity strategies overall. And that's why I put in for the FY twenty-four budget for a diversity position.
Remember Boozer Strutter, board member Briggs, and then board member Adam Stafford in that order, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I I'm in support of this position and and I am. Glad about the other position as well, but I think we need both. I think the. There are unique needs in the system right now, and the reality is that. Our neighboring school systems are going to be really aggressive in recruitment. Of Latinx teachers and other employees and we will. One, not be on equal playing field and two, not projecting. What we we want to say about PG CPS is a welcoming. Environment to work here. And I I think this position is unique and I I support it. We've. Talked about this for for years that I've been on the board and. You know, we were informed for years about some of the unique challenges of recruitment. And I I think the board is saying, you know, we we support everything that you're doing. And there's no, I I'm, this isn't a criticism, this is just a reality of. Of the where we are in the school system and hiring in this nation. So I I fully support this. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much. And Dr. Baldwin, thanks so much for sharing the the background and expertise here. I just wanted to say, I think again, I want to echo what everyone has already said, which is that I think this is a very important issue. I think that. You know, one, when we talk about equity, it's really important that we have comparable representation. If our student population, which we know in Prince George's County is at least a decent portion, English language learners. Then we need to have teachers that reflect those students. And I think to your point around. The Equal Employment Opportunity or Equal Employment Opportunity Act, I believe, is what you're referencing in the Civil Rights Act and discrimination. I feel like there's also opportunity for protected classes in there. I'm not sure, I'm sure our legal counsel can clarify, but. You know, you can have a quota for, you know, the amount of Latinx students or the amount of, you know, black males or whatever else you may want to recruit. Based on people who are under protected classes. So I think that there's probably additional additional information there that our legal counsel can clarify. If that's a concern or or not, but you know, just wanted to say that I think this is really important and we should have that, you know, comparable. Layout in our district as far as teachers that reflect our students' identity. Thanks so much for sharing that.
Board member Adam Stafford and board member Murray.
Thank you so much. Thank you, colleagues. I'm so happy to co-sponsor this with colleague LaSaya Frazier. And I just wanted to echo, you know, the importance of students seeing that reflection of themselves in the classroom. And how, you know, putting someone purposefully and intentionally in this position. We can focus on the hiring, recruitment and retention, you know, as my colleague, board member Boozer Strutter stated. Creating that welcoming school environment and school district environment where. Our Latino community feels that they can come and thrive here. And so having someone that is intentionally focused on this community. It's our thirty, over thirty percent of our students identify as Latino students. And I believe that this really can help us to actually see some significant change in the population of teaching staff. And folks in admin that represent this student population. So I just thank you again, everyone. I I hope that we can support this. So I just thank you again, everyone. I, I hope that we can support this amendment.
Thanks Chair Harris. Also wanted to speak in favor of this amendment. Thank you to my colleague for bringing forth this bold proposal. This isn't a new issue to our system. It's one that we have talked about for years, but not one that we have seen a lot of progress with. As we think about our growing Latino population in the county, it's going to become more difficult to put educators in front of our Latino students that look like them. Not less difficult. That population is growing year over year. So in order for us to close that gap, we're going to have to massively scale up the amount of recruitment and retention and promotion that we're doing for our Latino educators. I mean, it's, it's absolute travesty how few administrators we have being promoted in our system that are of Latino descent. I think that this amendment is just one small first step towards addressing it. It's something that I'm proud to be in support of. I mean, just one, you know, colleague Madalena Salta talked about. I mean, just having one educator who looks like you during your educational career can really change the trajectory of your future. And it's something that for too many of our students is lacking right now. And so I'll ask colleagues to vote in support of this.
Board member Zippor Miller, and then board member or board chair, Mckinnes Murray, please.
Thank you again, and thank you again, colleague LaSae Frazier, for bringing this up because I think it is important that students do have representation, whether it's in the classroom or leaders that look like them. But as I look at, and as we talked during the ABFA meeting, I really am in support of this. But what I'm hearing Dr. Baldwin said is the position is already in the budget for FY24. So could we, if it's already in there, could we ensure that this person, individual is charged with doing just that? Focusing on hiring teachers and leaders or and central office staff of Latino descent?
Thank you for asking that question. Yes, as I've stated, we have already put in for the FY24 an executive level position that will focus on diversity strategies, not only in recruitment, but in retention and look at diversity in our underrepresented areas such as our Hispanic and our males. You know, we have not had the position for the last three years, but data shows that we've actually increased the number of teachers over the last three years. I know that you received information that says it's four point six, but it's actually five point one. Human Resources has been committed to this effort and will continue to be committed. In addition to the strategies that have been proposed that are specific to the Hispanic community, we have implemented those strategies and I've responded to those in the board amendment. So again, we already have a, actually two positions that focus on what you're actually proposing to create another one for. In addition to, I've already put in for FY24, which would be at no cost to the board, seeing as though, you know, there are going to have to be some hard decisions to be made. I've already put in for what you are asking for. So, you know, hopefully that does answer your question. And again, we have actually increased our numbers without that position. So I'm feeling confident that with including such a position, that we will continue to increase those numbers. I would also, if need be, look at the number of representation in our surrounding jurisdictions as well, that we have proven that our efforts really do continue to raise our numbers and there's no stopping us now. So I hope that answers your question, board member Zippor Miller.
Yes, thank you.
Board chair, Mckinnes Murray, and then board member Jackson, and then we'll go to board member LaSae Frazier for round two.
Okay, board members, I was going to, I support this amendment because I think it's budget neutral. But I was going to add, I was going to call for the vote because we have another session where people are lined up to speak. So I need to, we need to do some housekeeping after this vote is what I'm asking you, Dr. Harris. Thank you.
Yes, yes ma'am. Colleagues with their hands up. Okay, board member Jackson and then board, yeah, board member Jackson, board member LaSae Frazier for second round, and then Dr. Zippor Miller for second round. Keeping in mind that we need to wrap up soon, colleagues, please.
Right. So Dr. Baldwin, I have a question. In regards to, I know you said we already have a dedicated FTE to diversity strategies. I guess my question would be, having a dedicated person or FTE focus solely on the Latinx community, since it's such a large portion of the composition of our school body, do you think that will be helpful? And also, will it make us more competitive in attracting and retaining the Latinx talent, community talent on within side of our school system?
Sure. So I just want to clarify that I put it in for this current budget for FY24. So if the FY24 budget is approved, then I will be posting and filling that position. We are pretty competitive right now, but I do think that there are some things that we can add on to our toolbox for diversity. And absolutely, it will be a strong focus on our Hispanic population. And that's what I, you know, I've always, under Human Resources, been committed to do and will continue to do that work. So that would definitely be one of the main focuses of the work. And it will not just be where we are right now, where it's, you know, we sign up for our Hispanic-serving institutions, we go out and recruit in certain places. There is a range of things that we need to do to create an actual community for our Hispanic population so that they can come here and want to be here, where I don't think other school districts are doing that right now. So I do think that we have a good plan to move ahead. But again, there's already a position in the budget at the executive level to do this work and I'm happy to partner with, with whomever to make sure that we increase our numbers. As again, we've been increasing over the last three years and I don't want to stop that work now.
Are, are there any metrics, and I'm not familiar, sorry, but are there any like target goals, like E performance indicators where it's like you want to reach a certain level of diversity by a certain time? And, and how are we measuring, you know, with respect to those milestones?
Well, thank you for that question because those gaps in our services come from our equity dashboard and then have outlined strategic metrics in our strategic plan. So it is also part of our strategic plan to increase staff as well. It's increase our multi-language staff, multilingual staff as well. So it is, it's in our strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you. Board member LaSae Frazier.
Thank you. What I'm, I'm suggesting is not to remove the current position that we have on the budget. I applaud you that you are actually having a position. I'm actually requesting that we add a position because the, we, we can't do less. We could do more. And as a, as a board, we can do something different, something that other people are not doing. And I think that it's important for our students, it's important for our community to see us. But I know that we're running out of time, so I, I would be amenable to wait for the conversation until our next meeting. And then we will have the data of the information that I requested from your department as well. So I'm amenable to that.
Oh, Dr. is a poor Miller and then board member Murray for round two.
Scratch me for now.
Board member Murray.
Yes, I would like to make that motion to table till the 23rd, this motion.
There's a motion on the floor to table item 2.5 until the February 23rd meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Board member Boozer Strutter.
I'm just going to make the same point as before that I'd hope that we had as many votes as possible on these this evening. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Board member, I'm sorry, Ms. Lopez, the vote, I mean, the roll, please.
Yes, Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Hi.
Mrs. Boozer Strutter. Mr. Briggs.
Hi.
Mr. Fields. Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Hi.
Dr. Zippor Miller.
I apologize. Can you clarify, is this a motion to table?
This is the motion to table until February 23rd.
Hi.
Mr. David Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Valentine. Ms. Walker. Mrs. Mckinnes Murray.
Hi.
Dr. Harris.
Hi.
Motion pass.
Before we move on to item 2.6, let's turn the floor over to Chair Mckinnes Murray for a moment.
Yes, colleagues, we have six people signed up to speak at the public hearing to the staff. Do we have the six waiting for us? Could you sit down?
Ms. Adeline is calling them now to tell them that we are still in the first session, the budget work session, and we're trying to delay it.
Okay, then my, my ask of the board members, we still have, how many, I think?
Four.
Four, we still have four more amendments. And at the rate we're going, that could take until 7:30. Do you want to delay the public hearing until 7:30 to finish this? And then I can ask staff to, to notify the people that we're running late by 30 minutes. Anyone? Board members, no opinion?
Okay, maybe we take a motion really quick. Okay, so, so I, I want to put a motion on the floor to, to extend the, the budget work session until 7:30.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, let's do, yeah, let's do a roll call real quick.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Hi.
Ms. Boozer Strutter. Mr. Briggs. Mr. Fields. Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Hi.
Dr. Juanita Miller. Mr. David Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Valentine. Ms. Walker. Mrs. Mckinnes Murray.
Hi.
Dr. Harris. Dr. Steve Miller.
Hi.
Motion pass.
Thank you so much, colleagues. So staff, can you please let the folks in the waiting room know that we are, we will convene at 7:30? Thank you. Proceed, Mr. Harris.
Uh, colleagues, item 2.6 Equity Audit, board member Adam Stafford, brief introduction, please, followed by Dr. Golson's staff. Is that board member Adam Stafford? For Equity Audit, item 2.6.
Yes, but the document that's on board docs is incorrect, so I'm trying to pull up the correct one. Okay. Thank you, colleagues. So the purpose of an equity audit is to allow districts to identify and analyze institutional practices that produce discriminatory trends in student academic data. This is a common practice that's used in districts throughout the country in order to determine how to address systemic inequities. So in our policy 0101, it states that the Board of Education and the system shall prioritize educational equity by removing institutional barriers and, you know, really taking that time to address and analyze how students access educational opportunities and support. So an equity audit would examine a lot of different topics. So this would be a third party that would conduct an equity audit. They could look at programmatic equity, thinking about students groups that are overrepresented or underrepresented in different courses, particularly in special education, teaching and professional development quality. Thinking about, are we pairing the most highly qualified teachers with the students that have the most need? And these are just examples, thinking about what are some of the systemic, you know, structures that we're using to look at data that examine educational equity, thinking about culture and community. Do stakeholders feel that this is a supportive, inclusive community and then equity in, in the workplace? And so generally, these audits come with a set of recommendations. And then those recommendations guide boards like ours in making budgetary decisions and budget priorities and how we focus our energy. You know, sometimes, you know, perhaps we wouldn't have as many budget amendments, right? If we were looking off of some type of guide, right? An objective guide that was sort of helping to steer us and thinking about where are the areas of most need. So an equity audit is critical for us to be able to do our job effectively. It helps us to look at the system from a bird's eye view with an outsider providing us with that objective information. And then it allows us to then lead in, in that way. So I'm, I'm hoping that we'll have support for this. Again, this is the common practice that you can find in boards comparable to ours throughout the region and nationally. And I think that this will only help us as we, you know, attempt to close some of those barriers for our students. Thank you.
Dr. Baldwin.
Hi, we actually have already conducted an equity audit and we have an equity dashboard that Dr. Reese mentioned at the last board meeting. And it has the information that you are referencing and then our goals and outcomes align with the strategic plan. So before we invest in the funding for that, I think it would behoove us to look at what we currently have and have a discussion around the goals and outcomes that are already aligned to our strategic plan because we already know what the gaps are.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Colleagues, I'll now accept action on item 2.6 Equity Audit.
So I move to accept item 2.6.
There's a motion on the floor to accept item 2.6 Equity Audit. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, colleagues. The floor is open for discussion. Board member Adam Stafford, followed by board member Boozer Strutter. Again, remember, colleagues, we need to conclude in the next 20 minutes.
So thank you so much for that reply. One of the challenges with implementing an internal equity audit is that we often have blind spots and that can keep us from being able to really see what might be some challenges for our students and our communities. We all hold biases and there's no doubt that in working within a system, you know, you are going to view the equity challenges that you face from a very particular lens. And that's, you know, your view. So that's why an external audit is, is beneficial because they bring a different perspective and a different lens and help us to see what we would call our blind spots. And we want to note those blind spots because often, these are the things that we hear out in the community. We say, well, we didn't even know that was an issue, right? And those are some of the ways that an equity audit can help us to look at systemic data. And so I really would just encourage us as a board to remember. And so, I really would just encourage us as a board to remember the administration and the school system can have equity protocols and practices. That's wonderful. That's awesome. That's what we want school systems to have, right? But our job as the board is to look outside of that and to say, we're looking at a systemic level, and it's best practice to pull in a third party to support us in having that data so that we are not blinded by some of those biases and blind spots that we may have, um, if we're only looking at things in a vacuum. So, I just want to encourage us to use this best practice, um, as a way to, um, you know, advance our work as a board.
Thank you. It was actually done by an external vendor. It was not done internally.
Board member Boozer Strutter, board members, and poor Miller.
Yeah, thank you.
That's it.
I'm sorry. Um, well, thank you so much. I, I just want to, uh, support that, you know, I think it was Hanover who did this work for us, that the critical success indicator dashboards and of this equity strategic plan are providing us some pretty stark data to, to act on. Um, I think our, um, I think a separate, I, I'm not so sure a separate audit would get us any new or different data. In fact, I, I think that, uh, anyone from the outside might look at Hanover's data and, and question why we would be doing this, um, what their value would be. Um, so I, I think as a board, we need to dig in on these critical success indicators and the strategic plan. I think we, we just, I don't think we have enough, and I think that's part of, maybe while we're here today, and I do want to say, I think, uh, uh, board member Adam Stafford, the Academic Achievement Committee has done, you know, requested some of those specific uh, research investigations that have been very helpful to us as a board, and so I, I see the data there. Um, I just, I just worry that, you know, I'm just not so sure the, the extra value another company would bring. So, I just wanted to raise some of those points. Thank you.
Doctor Zapor Miller.
Yeah, my first question was answered. I was going to ask, was it done by an external, um, company, which it was, and if the data is already there, then my question would be, do we need the amendment if the, uh, the amendment is asking for an equity audit, um, to be conducted by an external, uh, vendor, which has already been done and the data is present? So, do we need the amendment?
I guess my question is, colleagues, have you, have we ever discussed the data from this, from this, um, this, uh, audit?
In, in bits and pieces, if you want a full presentation, we can add it, um, you can talk to board leadership, or when you can add it to agenda setting.
All right, colleagues, um, there's a motion on the floor to accept item two point six equity amendments. I see board member Jackson's hand is up.
Yeah, um, given, given the, um, the information that, um, was just shared, uh, I don't, I don't know if all of the board has had the opportunity to dig into the data. Um, do you think that, um, and I'm just throwing this out there, that it will probably benefit us to, uh, listen to a presentation uh, by the CEO and her team, um, about the, um, the equity dashboard and, um, the equity audit that has been conducted? And maybe, um, after, um, that, we can probably, uh, have a better handle on, do we need to, um, have a um, an equity audit after the information to share with us?
So, that sounds, that sounds, um, reasonable, just not in the timeframe we have for this, uh, FY twenty four budget. Um, so if, if that's something that you're proposing, it would have to be in the form of a motion. If that's something that you'd like to see, then we would push it through board leadership, whichever route you like, colleague.
Well, I guess, I guess first my question would be, um, is there, is there an opportunity? Is that like already a camp presentation? Um, for Dr. Goz and her team that we can probably get a, a quick turnaround on the presentation, and then maybe we can, uh, meet prior to that, um, in order to vote on it?
There will be a presentation before February twenty third, right?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I, I'd like to make a, um, I guess, just, I'm trying to, just for point of information, when was the audit done?
Uh, I want to say, if this is twenty twenty-three, during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Right, it was going to.
I would just request that perhaps that audit be presented to the board with the action items from that audit and the recommendations. You know, I think that as a board, when there are audits that happen like that, that are external vendors, you know, generally, those types of presentations would come before the board prior to our budget setting meetings, so that we can I, I don't think that we have, I'm sorry.
That's the data that we use for our strategic.
What I was, yeah, so what I was saying was I, I would love if we could have like a separate meeting that would focus specifically on the results of that audit, so that we can get that information. Thank you.
Board member Boozer Strutter.
Yeah, I was just going to know, know we were provided with the October twenty twenty-two Priority CSI Progress Report, and that's where Hanover's, uh, you know, logo is on there, um, which I just wanted to note that it, it certainly informed some of the questions I've had through the budget process. So, you know, if that needs to be resent to the full board or the location on the website, I would recommend that because it, it definitely is a, a an equity look at the system that we did not have before the strategic planning, and, and we did do the strategic planning process prior to, just some of us were on the board for that process. Not all, all of our colleagues are on the board for that initial process of the equity audit. So, I, I could understand a little bit of that gap. Thank you.
Or Chair Mickens Murray. I think I know.
Okay, uh, Dr. Golson, I suggest that you send that, um, audit report to the, uh, board members. We cannot have a meeting between now and the twenty-third. We've tried to do several things between now and the twenty-third. No one's schedule is working uh, for a, a, uh, meeting of the board. So, um, I think tonight we need to, um, vote this up or down. Thank you.
Doctor Zapor Miller, I can't remember if this is a second, is a second round.
It is my second, yes, thank you. Um, so I was just going to come circle back because, um, if the equity audit was done twenty twenty-one, that's only a year, two years ago, twenty-one, yeah, so we're just starting twenty-three, um, and the information can be presented to us. I, I, I don't know at this point whether there's a need to have another equity audit, or so I would like to propose that we don't need this amendment at this time, so we have a chance to look at the, uh, information from the equity audit that was done in twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Oh.
Was that a motion? It was a motion?
Sorry, I didn't state it properly. Yes, I would like to make a motion that.
So that, there's a substitute motion on the floor to reject the item two point six equity audit, uh, seconded by Chair Mickens Murray. Discussion, colleagues. All right, uh, Ms. Lopez.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Abstain.
Ms. Booze Strutter.
Yes.
Mr. Briggs.
Hi.
Mr. Phil. Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Who abstained?
Dr. Juanita Miller. Dr. Cipra Miller.
Hi.
Mr. David Moore.
Abstain.
Mr. Valentine. Ms. Walker. Mrs. Mickens Murray.
Hi.
Dr. Harris.
Um.
We have seven, um, Mr. Dr. Harris. Correction, I have six.
Yeah, you have six. Motion fails, the six. All right, colleagues, there's a motion on the floor now to accept the item two, item two point six equity audit. Ms. Lopez.
Mrs. Adam Stafford. Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Um, hi.
Ms. Booze Str- Ms. Booze Strutter.
No.
Mr. Briggs.
Abstain.
Mr. Jackson.
Um, what I'm saying.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Who abstained?
Dr. Cipra Miller.
No.
Mr. David Moore.
Hi.
Mrs. Mickens Murray. Mrs. Mickens Murray.
I said no. No, you can't hear me?
Dr. Harris.
Abstain. Okay, so that motion fails too. Okay, so no action is taken on item two point six, to my understanding?
If the motion pat, I mean, fails, that is an action.
Well, it failed to be accepted and failed to be rejected.
But it's still in action. You, 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 the first motion failed, and now we went to the primary motion, and that motion failed. So, it can't be moved forward as an amendment for this issue.
Oh, no, no, oh, no, no, I know, I know that.
Oh, but then that's what, that's what.
And I was, yeah, no. Um, okay, moving on to item two point seven, two point seven, addressing the teacher, teacher shortage. Mr. Briggs, the floor is yours. Very briefly, sir.
Very short. Um, I just say that the teacher shortage, the teacher crisis, as Dr. Ballin put it, is, um, you know, it's been happening for a while, and it's been exacerbated by the pandemic. People are leaving en masse because of a number of, of reasons that, you know, people who've been doing this work for some time understand, but even if you have relationships with family members. So, I'm proposing that there be a role, a full-time equivalent role that exists in the Human Resources Office, um, that would specifically focus on interventions to support with addressing the teacher crisis. There are already a number of principal, uh, programs that Prince George's County has in place right now. Um, but I think that, you know, there's just a lot of data that speaks to the impact that, that principals have on schools. I think it's about twenty-five percent. Um, so having strong principles is really important in supporting teachers to move through that pipeline to leadership is also very important, which is a part of why they were leaving. Um, for some, I also think that it's very important that we use the equity audit information to really identify and address the challenges that teachers are facing, so that equity audit, we just identified already exists. Um, but I think it would be good information and good intel to figure out, you know, who's getting promoted, what their gender is, what their socioeconomic status is, just so that we can make sure that we're really supporting teachers and also driving them back to the district. Um, and then I think outside groups, partnerships, philanthropy, nonprofits that we can partner with, can we get money to support some of these programs that we may want to pilot or other things that we may want to do? So, my suggestion is just having a role that solely focuses on this, and it looks like right now, based on the feedback that I received from the Human Resources Office, we have a number of disparate roles that do these things and some part-time roles, but this would make this locked in as like an actual intentional effort to address the teacher crisis.
Uh, yes. Oh, yes, thank you. Um, right now, we do actually have a temporary position that works to, um, coordinate our university partnership, so we did respond with, agree with modifications that we can add and make it a full-time position, but we do have that. Um, in addition, I also want us to be mindful, and I think, uh, board member Boozer Struthers will, um, appreciate this. Um, the Kerwin Commission, the Blueprint for the Teacher Career Ladder, is actually working to, uh, keep teachers in the classroom and not move towards the assistant principal or principalship. So, while we do have robust principalship programs and are nationally known because of our work with the Wallace Foundation, um, to which, uh, board member LaSalle Frazier had quoted, that was actually work that was done in Prince George's County. Um, that is something that we continue to do and carry on, and we're very proud of that, but I do want to be mindful of looking at our teachers that are moving up, because with the career ladder, the focus is to actually have them not move up to the principalship, but stay more into leadership positions at the teacher level. So, um, that is just one of the things I want us to keep on the pulse as we look at the blueprint and pillar two, but we do have that point two position or temporary position, so if we want to add to it, then, um, we are in agreement with that.
Uh, board member Briggs, if you're going to make a motion for something to happen.
Look, I'm not.
Okay, well, I need a motion for something to happen first. So, colleagues, I'm, uh, opening the floor for an action on item two point eight. I'm sorry, two point seven.
I make a motion that we accept item two point eight.
Two point seven.
I mean, two point seven, sorry.
I need a second.
Second.
There it is. Thank you. Discussion, uh, Mr. Briggs.
I just wanted to add in that, um, for those of my colleagues that are voting, and based on what I shared, I actually agree with what Dr. Baldwin said, that there is a lot of research that says that, one, I think that, that teachers moving into principal roles is great if they want to do that. I was just suggesting that they move into leadership roles and higher pay, um, and those are opportunities for them. So, I just wanted to clarify that, as you're voting, that I agree with that piece, um, as an addition.
And then I'm going to add on to your piece that with the career ladder, they will actually get increased compensation as they move up in teacher leadership roles. So, it's a, we have a lot of work that's coming down the pipeline, so thank you for your support.
Okay, for clarification here, I, I heard Dr. Baldwin said they have a temporary position that they can make full-time. Mr. Briggs, are you saying to have another position, or are you saying to take her up on that offer and flip it into a full-time position?
She's saying that they have different positions that do this work, but they're broken apart, so this role would kind of put all of that comprehensively into one, and they would focus on that.
Got it. Okay, discussion, colleagues. All right, seeing no hands, um, board member, uh, Boozer Strutter.
Yeah, sorry about, sorry, it's delayed on that. Um, so I guess, I, I'm still trying to get clarity, administration is supporting this to change the point two to a full, to a full-time equivalent. And if I'm hearing correctly, the, the focus would be that it supports the goals of the Blueprint Career Ladder, which is what we're doing anyway. Like, so, I, I just want to be clear on what you're saying to us.
Uh, sure, so we currently have a temporary staff member that coordinates all of our university partnerships and programs, and I believe board member Briggs had written into the amendment to expand on that, so we said that we would accept it with modifications to increase that it would not solely be focused on the teacher career ladder piece, um, but rather on all of our partnerships that we currently have that are right now, uh, facilitated by a temporary staff person.
Board member Briggs.
Last thing I'm going to say is, and I just wanted to say to, uh, board member Boozer Strutter, that that indirectly impacts the teacher crisis. So, even though it's not explicitly focused on that, that would address it by the very nature of the role. So, i- it's kind of all encompassing.
All right, colleagues, I'm going to call, well, I can't call for the vote, but I don't see any other hands up, so, Ms. Lopez.
Mrs. Adam Stafford. Mrs. Adam Stafford. Ms. Booze Strutter.
Hi.
Ms. Adam Stafford. Ms. Booze Strutter.
Hi.
Mr. Briggs. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Briggs.
Hi.
Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Hi.
Dr. Cipra Miller.
Hi.
Mr. David Moore.
Hi.
Mrs. Mickens Murray.
Hi.
Dr. Harris. Doctor Harris.
Uh, motion passes. Um, item two point eight, increased in apprenticeship program. Chair Mickens Murray, vote yours.
Thank you, and I will be real quick. This is a program to start to support growing our own. We would have students being paid to repair, uh, computers, the Chromebooks as we have them in this system. But also, in conjunction with the, um, federal government, we would prepare, we would be preparing, uh, our students to go into those public, uh, those federal agencies to help, to, uh, help with help desk for computers. And every agency that I know of has a, uh, computer, um, operation. We also, um, like the idea that the administration was going to pilot this program anyway. All we're doing is accepting the, uh, friendly amendment that they gave us to do it in ten schools and not forty schools. So colleagues, I ask your support, this not only helps students, it helps your CTE program, it helps the blueprint, and it demonstrates to all Marylanders, there is that we in Prince George County can grow some career, uh, students who, at the end of their high school, uh, program, they would be valuable employed citizens. And maybe we could come up with a certificated program, and that's something that we'd have to work out, uh, through Mister Zuckerman's team.
Thank you, Chair Mickens Murray. Mister, I'm sorry, Doctor Zuckerman is, yeah, there he is, I see him. Vote yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks, um, Ms. Mickens Murray for the proposal. Um, we fully support the, uh, amendment and the way that um, she laid it out, uh, just, uh, financially, it's, um, feasible and, uh, or more feasible and just operationally, just, um, going with ten schools and would, um, be a perfect complement to what we are planning to do as well for students on Saturdays. Um, so this'll, this'll be a really good thing for all the reasons that, um, um, Board Member Mickens Murray, Chair.
Very good. Colleagues, I'm now opening the floor to take action on item two point eight student apprenticeship program.
I make a motion to accept the, uh, amendment for the two point eight student apprenticeship program with the friendly amendment from the administration.
A second.
Question, sorry, I'm still muted. Open the floor for discussion. Great. For member the side, right?
I'll be quick. I just want to say I love this amendment, and I look forward to seeing it in place.
I echo that. Excited to see it. Um, remember, I'm sorry, Ms. Lopez, I'm talking too fast. Ms. Lopez.
Mrs. Allen Stafford.
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struthers. Mister Briggs.
Aye.
Mister Jackson.
Yes.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier. Doctor Sippera Miller.
Aye.
Mister David Murray.
Aye.
Mrs. Mickens Murray.
Aye.
Doctor Harris.
Uh, motion passes. Um, I want to move into two point nine, but I'll pause quickly. Chair Mickens Murray, am I okay to do two point nine? Okay, moving on to two point nine, colleagues, uh, this will be for school-based health clinics. I'm gonna turn the floor over to Board Member Adam Stafford to briefly present school-based health clinics, followed by Doctor Goldson's staff. I see Doctor Cole, followed by Doctor.
Hi, everyone, so. Uh, okay. So, uh, school-based health clinics, uh, just as a quick overview, uh, these are a popular strategy for providing primary and preventative healthcare services to students in school settings. And research has shown that using school-based health clinics can improve access to healthcare, not only for students, um, but also for their families, um, and it's particularly useful for students that, um, may have difficulty accessing care outside of school, um, due to like a lack of transportation or insurance. Um, you know, in our district specifically, we do have, um, some sites that are designated as school-based health clinics. But as we've mentioned in previous sessions, uh, those sites have not been, um, able to be fully staffed. And so this budget amendment would allow for the administration to, uh, you know, either, uh, well, basically to fully staff those sites that are already in existence, um, but then also to add more sites. Um, I want to just note that, you know, we, you know, in comparison to our neighboring counties, we are uh, behind when it comes to having, uh, these health clinics. Um, specifically in, in our neighboring counties, I believe in Baltimore, there are twenty of these clinics, and in Montgomery County, I believe seventeen. Um, and we, as I mentioned, have four, and right now they're, they're not in operation fully. Um, these clinics can support with things like immunization compliance, um, could save us in fines for, uh, that, for students that are un-immunized and, and immunization non-compliance. And these clinics can also support in reducing absences and tardiness. Uh, they can reduce student hospitalization, um, improve student attendance, and improve their GPAs, and it can support in increasing student learning time, uh, from not having to miss school due to preventable illnesses. And so uh, I'd like to just encourage us to really to, to fully staff what we have. Um, and that might mean us going outside of, you know, our, our previous partners, which we're working with the county to, you know, soliciting, as we've said in other meetings, soliciting for other groups or federally, uh, funded groups to come in and do this work. Um, but then also bringing us on par to, you know, our, our, um, counterparts in the state, you know, expanding this um, to really support all of our students. This is just part of the work that's necessary in order to lift student academic achievement.
Thank you for your comment, Board Members, Adam Stafford, just as you. Um, the intent of the development of these wellness centers, as they are referred to here in Prince George's County, was to do just what you just referenced. They initially were to be staffed with a nurse practitioner, with an LPN, social worker, hu- full-time. Part-time, they were to be staffed with a dental assistant as well. That has not prevailed. As a result of that, over the last four years, I have watched this work intently, and staffing is certainly a problem. Staffing members do not remain. As referenced in the questions that I submitted previously, currently of the information that I just shared in terms of what the intended staffing should be. Currently, we only have four social workers. I'm sorry, three social workers that are currently serving in the four wellness centers that we have. Recognizing as well that next year, with the provision of our middle schools, that we have six new schools that will be provided, and within each of those schools, we have the physical structure currently. The physical structure itself provides the space for what you've referenced in terms of the provision of supporting our students and their families. However, again, staffing is a problem. Now, now that we know staffing is a problem now, and it has been for some years, what I have worked with, with the team, in terms, what they are currently doing is working on, looking at some ways perhaps that we can outsource, get additional vendors to provide the support that is intended with each of those centers. I would like to reference as well that with the provision of our Hazel program, it has certainly served as an asset to us in that we're able to provide that support to many of our parents and our students as well. I shared that information with you during the previous boardwork session, where I spoke to the reference to the number of nine thousand parents that have completed consent forms today. And with the provision of those consent forms, we're continuing to service students. Quite often, actually daily, across the levels, high school, middle school, and elementary. With the local health department, they are indicating as well that with the Hazel program, we may be in a place next year to continue to pr- provide this program again next year, as it is this year, across the levels for elementary, middle, and high.
Thank you, Doctor, um, Cole. Hmm, colleagues, I'm now accepting action for item two point nine, school-based health clinics. Well, mute, not, all right, one more time, colleagues, I'm now taking action for item two point nine, school-based health clinics.
I'm moved to accept item two point nine.
Okay, I need a second. All right, floor is open for discussion. For member Adam Stafford.
Um, thank you so much, Doctor Coley, for sharing with us some of the challenges around these clinics. And I think that this funding can help, you know, possibly solve some of those challenges, if staffing is the challenge. As you mentioned, possibly outsourcing, bringing in other groups that can help fully staff those places. Um, I know that partners in the past have not been reliable, and so this can be an opportunity to pivot and expand, um. And I, I would just say I'm really happy about the Hazel program. I've heard so many great things in the community, um, about that, that program. Um, and we also know i- it's a yes, and we also know that in-person support, um, as I mentioned, can support with things like immunizations, uh, that, that are things that are crucial that, that we can't gain from a virtual program, but you know, I'm thinking that these things can work in partnership, so I, I'm, I think that this can only expand the great work that we started with telehealth, um, and and I think that's.
Thank you.
For member Boo.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, I guess I want a little more background on the sort of financing of these clinics. Um, so the expectation of the MOUs with, um, nonprofit service providers that have approached the system in the past, and I just won't name any to, to not, you know, because of there may be multiple interest, interested parties, but it's my understanding, the six new middle schools, there could be an existing, uh, service provider that's not having the same challenges as the, um, as the, uh, health department is having with, with our four. And I understand, Doctor Goldson, you shared with us at a past meeting that you are actually considering, or already in process of uh, putting out, um, a request for proposals for the four. So if you could distinguish those finances, because it was my understanding the six new middle schools, that if we do have this MOU with a solid uh, health providing organization, that they manage, uh, that they manage how all of the finances of the client works.
We, we currently, to date, that is our, as, as referenced, uh, Ms. Boozer Struthers. We are currently exploring our options. We don't have a person definitively today. We are exploring our options and trying to find those individuals that can accommodate what the needs would be in our remaining six, in our new six stu- schools that will be coming on board. However, uh, we also want the same for the four sites. That's Fairmind Heights, that's Blade, that's Oxen Hill High, and that's, um, Northwestern.
And, and so the clarity I'm seeking is that i- is that a change in the model? We actually will be spending dollars in this new model that we didn't because of the health department, like, eh, or does the state fund this?
We were spending dollars all along. No, we were spending dollars all along, but what we were doing was spending dollars on resources and a program that was outlined definitively in the MOU that was not being met.
Okay, thank you for clar-
Chair Mickens Murray.
Thank you. Um, based on what, uh, Doctor Coley has shared, I, I would support this amendment if, if, if we start with the four schools that we already have and the six schools that we know that are coming on board next year. Because we must start at some point setting the money aside to provide these services to our students. So, um, I, I can see that we, we need to start someplace, and I think, uh, Adam Stafford, I think what she asked for was ten schools, and I think with the six and the four, that is ten schools. So, uh, thank you.
I'd like to add as well to Ms. Um, Adam Stafford, Stafford's, um, reference. They do not, in each of what we have currently, as she shared, provide the provision of providing student immunizations, and we certainly need individuals on board that can accommodate that need, as we're faced with that each year.
Right, and colleagues, please be mindful of the time. People are waiting to talk to us. Thank you.
Uh, colleagues, anyone else for discussion? Okay, Ms. Lopez, I'll call for the question. Sorry, I'll call for the vote to accept agenda item two point nine, school-based health clinics.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struthers. Mister Briggs. Mister Briggs.
Aye.
Mister, um, Jackson.
Yes.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Aye.
Doctor Sippera Miller.
Aye.
Mister David Murray.
Aye.
Mister Valentine.
Aye.
Mrs. Mickens Murray.
Aye.
Doctor Harris.
Sorry, I'm on mute. Bye. All right, thank you, colleagues. That concludes the non-budget amendments that we had for tonight. Um, thank you for bearing with us. Thank you for the robust conversation. I'll get off stage now and turn it back over to Board Member or our Chair Mickens Murray. Thanks again.
I thought we needed to turn it over to Ms. Howell to give us some.
She. Yeah, Doctor Goldson said she's not.
Too late, she'll have to do it on the twenty-third. All right, that's fine. Uh, thank you, colleagues, and thank you so much. This, this was, uh, a robust conversation, a great conversation. Um, for, on behalf of our students in the Prince George's County Public Schools. Doctor Harris, do you have any next steps?
Uh, next steps, colleagues, are, if you do have follow-up questions, um, we'll be accepting those via email. Uh, so make sure to send them to me, as well as Chair Mickens Murray, Ms. Lisa Howe, and Doctor Goldson. Um, the amendments that did pass, you'll see them again at the, uh, February twenty-third meeting. For the amendments that were tabled, we'll have updated discussion with those at that meeting as well. From my notes, I have two point two PGCPS reading clinic and two point five director of diversity both tabled until, uh, the, the twenty-third meeting. Um, so unless you have questions, or unless you are helping with one of those amendments, no future action until the next board meeting. So thank you again for joining us.
Thank you so much. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I have a motion to adjourn this February thirteen, twenty-third, uh, meeting?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Um, it's been moved and probably seconded in the discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Be nays. This concludes the, uh, February thirteen, twenty, twenty-three, second, this, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four proposed budget work session. For those who will be joining us at the fiscal year twenty twenty-four proposed, proposed budget public hearing at eight fifty, the meeting will be accessed using a different Zoom link. To the public, you can find a proposed budget public hearing link by visiting the board web, web page. To board members, the link can be found in your email. Thank you all for attending tonight's proposed budget. And I will see you at seven fifty-one.
You've got a hand up.
I just.
Say goodbye.
You have a hand up.
Chair, Chair Mickens Murray, I just.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jonathan, I didn't see it.
No problem, I just wanted to clarify, you said eight fifty, so for anyone watching in public, I want to make.
Oh, yeah, seven fifty. Thank you for the, I spent a long night. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. See you at the next meeting, guys.
Thanks, sir.